Good evening, we're calling to order the media of the Arlington Select Board for October 19th, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is John Heard, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Here, thank you.
Joe Carroll?
Here.
Steve DeCoursey?
Here.
And Lynn Diggins?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdoin?
Here.
Doug Heim?
Here.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Even if members of the public do not provide comments, participants are advised that people may be listening but do not provide comments, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda Dashboard. We recommend the members of the public follow along the agenda as posted on Novus unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, this chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If any members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on certain agenda items. For public comment items, after members have spoken, I, as the chair, will afford the public opportunities as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. So that takes us to the items on our agenda. Before we do so, I just want to make a couple of announcements. We do have Warren Article hearings that are coming up later in the night. For anybody that wishes to speak on Article 8 regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and Article 25 about the Black Lives Matter banner on Town Hall, both articles, the proponents of both articles have reached out to us and asked us to table these for the next meeting. They're not ready to present the articles tonight. So if you're here to speak on those two articles, those articles will be posted on our next agenda. And just a minor item, we have number seven on our agenda regarding the Shared Streets project that Brooks have. That item was just meant to be posted as correspondence received, so we won't have a discussion or vote on that item. So that will take us to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. We are going to take them individually tonight. So item number two is a request for a contractor drain layer license from New England Pipe Restoration Inc., 157 Lincoln Street, Lemmonster, Massachusetts. And I'll turn to Mrs. Mahan.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. DeCoursey?
A second.
Mr. Carroll, any comments or questions?
None, thank you.
And Mr. Diggins, any comments or questions?
None.
Attorney Heim?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
unanimous vote?
Thank you. And that takes us to item number two on our agenda. And for this, I'll first reach out to if any members have any questions or comments prior. Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wish to recuse myself from this item due to a conflict of interest.
All right, thank you. And the record will reflect that at this time, Mr. Carroll has muted himself and removed his video from the feed. All right, so we have on our regular agenda an appointment, the appointment of new election workers. We have Margaret Eskridge, 121 Appleton Street, Precinct 16, and Jeffrey Zimmer, 40 Grandview Road, Precinct 16. We also had on our emergency addendum that was posted, the appointment of additional election workers. We have Sierra Carroll, 21 Millet Street, Precinct 13, Carol Cohen, 256 Renfrew Street, Precinct 12, Charlotte Dowd, 182 Palmer Street, Precinct 5, Catherine Geis, 38 Johnson Street, Johnson Road, rather, Precinct 11. We have Hannah Faith Kellmhafer, 489 Summer Street, Precinct 19. We have Matthew Mays, 126 Warren Street, Precinct 10. And we have Julie Powers, 10 Mayflower Road, Precinct 12. I will turn to Mr. Diggins.
What motion to approve the new election workers?
Thank you. And Mr. DeCoursey?
A second.
And Mrs. Mahan, any comments or questions?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Carroll is not involved in this vote. Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's a four zero vote, and I declare so.
Thank you. And we will wait for Mr. Carroll. If he can hear us. And the record will reflect that Mr. Carroll is now back with us. So this takes us to public hearings, item number four on the agenda. We have a kennel license petition at 59 Bethesda Street from Alyssa O'Rourke of 65 Bethesda Street. We do have materials in here. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Town Manager if he can promote Captain Flynn, who's done some work on this item. Captain Flynn, can you hear us?
I can.
Great, thank you. I'll first turn to Attorney Heim for a little background on this particular item.
So for the board's information and the general public's information, the long and short of it is that when folks have a complaint about a kennel and they write to the Select Board, there's a sort of statutory process that requires the Select Board to have an initial sort of opening of a discussion about that complaint. And the board basically has two options. It can refer the matter for investigation to the police department and essentially get a report and recommendation back, or the board can attempt to hear the complaint and make a decision that they'll take no action, that they'll modify or suspend a kennel license, or that they'll revoke a license. But those are the basic two courses of action at this initial stage. To my understanding, and I assume that Captain Flynn will speak to this, the police department has done some preliminary investigation and has given some time for compliance. And I'll leave that Captain Flynn to address. But again, the two options are that the board can refer for further investigation, or the board can decide to try to address the substance this evening based on the information that has.
All right, I'll turn it to Captain Flynn for just some background of the matter and then the current status of the investigation.
Good evening. So for the last month or so, I have been overseeing the Animal Control Officer. And back in August, on the 19th of August, the Animal Control Officer and representative from the Board of Health had gone out to do an inspection, a kennel inspection out at 59 Bethesda. Later that afternoon, so this was a kennel license for eight animals on the property. Later that afternoon, the dogs got loose and they were running amok kind of in the neighborhood. And there was a report of a potential bite to another dog. I was on the road at that time, so I went out to the location with the Animal Control Officer and met with the owners and did a walkthrough on the property. So it immediately came to, you know, it was quick to understand that the fencing in the yard was an issue. There was a lot of brush. There was a lot of debris in the backyard. There was also several abandoned vehicles in the backyard. But the fencing had a lot of brush and the dogs had made their way through a couple of the areas of the fence. So I informed the owners, you know, by this time, they had the animals under control and in the house, that the fencing in the yard and the gate were really substandard for what they were looking for. I informed them that if they wanted to, if we wanted to go with that kennel license and renew that kennel license, that he was going to have to address that and also the debris in the yard to make sure that the animals were safe. That was on the 19th of August. We went back out to visit that home in September. Actually, in September, on the 23rd, we needed to move that appointment and we back out there on October 9th. So the owners had put a lot of work into the backyard. They had put up a brand-new fence. The property abuts the back of McLennan Park. So there was a good existing fence in the back of McLennan Park, but everything else kind of was makeshift. They put in brand-new fencing from the corners of the home to the lot lines and ran them all the way out to that fence. And it's a big property. It's a double lot. So they had made a good deal of progress and they had begun the process of cleaning up the yard. We gave them some more guidance and suggested that they continue the work at the house and clean up the debris in the yard. There was still some sharp metal fencing and still a vehicle in the yard, a large tractor, not a small tractor, a full-size tractor and some other debris. So the gist of it is, is that the property owners and the kennel license holders have done a great deal of work out at that property. Probably, not probably, but more so than we've even asked. You know, they put up a fence, but they not only put up a fence, they put up a material at the base of the fence which would keep the dogs from digging to go underneath the fence. They also put in a barrier like slats that would keep the view between the two yards to a minimum. So they've really gone above and beyond what we've asked them to this point. We have one more date, a final date at the end of the month on the 30th, that we're going to go out and do a final inspection. Today, I went out and did kind of an unannounced visit and saw that they continue to make progress. A lot of the fencing and the material had been cleaned up. The tractor was off the property. They have a landscaper supposedly coming out tomorrow to chip a lot of the brush and whatnot they've removed. They've done really kind of above and beyond where I thought they would be at this point. One more visit at the end of the month should make a determination, I think, of whether really they should continue with that license or not. There's also been a little bit of back and forth between this neighbor and a neighbor next door. And that's seemed to have come under control as well, some signage issues, putting signs up on their fence line towards each other, and that seems to have subsided. At least that's what I noticed today in my visit. So again, the Animal Control Officer and myself have a visit scheduled on the 30th. And at this point, it looks like the owners are doing everything that we're asking them to do to adhere to the kennel license.
Thank you, Captain Flynn. And I will turn to the board for any questions of Captain Flynn. Mr. Carroll?
No, thank you, Captain. Thank you for the update and thank you for the report. It looks like this particular situation has occupied a lot of your time and the ACO and Officer Dundetson in there as well. So I appreciate your persistence on this. And I think that you've answered all of my questions around the current state of the property. So I'm going to sit back, Mr. Chair, and you know, once we go through the round of questions for Captain Carne, I'd like to hear from the petitioner, at least one of the petitioners, as well with the nature of the current complaint is for the board. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. And similar to Mr. Carroll's remarks, Captain Flynn and I, Diane Welch obviously has spent a lot of time on this. In terms of the kennel, as of today, how many dogs are in the kennel, Captain Flynn? To Mr. Chair?
The kennel licenses for eight animals, eight.
Eight. I understand that you spoke about it's a double lot. There's been a lot of yard cleanup. There's been some fencing instructed. But there also was brush debris and a vehicle issue. What is the status of those two issues?
So there was a full-size tractor in the backyard along with a trailer. The full-size tractor, which hadn't been started in probably 10 years, has been removed from the property. There's still a trailer that is in the yard that is scheduled to be moved this week. There's a large area of brush in the center of the yard. And this was really developed because there was a lot of brush along the fence line. And I would imagine the fence company who put in the fence asked that that be removed so that they could put in the fence. So there's a large kind of a brush pile in the middle of the yard. The animal owners and the kennel license holders have a landscaper coming out with a chipper. They tell me tomorrow to take care of that brush pile. And again, there was apparently a dumpster on the property for a while. They removed a lot of old fencing, a lot of old metal that was in the yard at the time. And it's an ongoing process, but they have made significant gains.
And thank you, Captain Flynn. Just two other questions. In terms of any biting incidents from the dogs in this kennel, am I correct that there was one and it was dog on dog, or was there something beyond that?
There was a reported bite, but the ACO informs me that it actually, she did not believe that was a bite, nor did she ever receive a bite notice. She believes it was maybe one dog taking another dog in the mouth. There was saliva. But she does not believe that there was a bite, nor she received any notice. And if there is an animal brought to a veterinary from the community, the Animal Control Officer is made aware of that. So she has not received any bite notices from that property.
Okay, thank you, Captain. My last question would be, and I'm not trying to be trivial. I'm just looking, Captain Flynn and ACO officer and others have provided us with a lot of information. I know there's been an issue of signs between neighbors abutting each other. I don't know if you could speak to whether that's been resolved, but my reading is it's anybody's right to put whatever sign they want to put out. I don't know if you have any positive news on that.
Actually, I do. So there's some video surveillance cameras that are used at the property. And there were some video surveillance signage that was on the fence, but it really wasn't, it wasn't professional signing. It was more kind of smile, you're on camera, that type of signage. So I suggested to the owners to put up some professional signage on the fences saying, you know, area on the video surveillance. When they put up their signs, they put up more signs than recommended. And the next-door neighbors then put up some signs facing their home, kind of saying that they were blocking the other signs. I believe it was on a Sunday, last Sunday, the 11th, that I got a call on my cell phone. And I happened to be out and about and I stopped by and there was a number of signs on the fences, on both sides of the fences. So I spoke to both of the residents and it looks like I convinced them to remove the signs. We get one sign up on each side of the property, one, you know, basically facing each neighbor, one facing McLennan Park, and one or two in the front house facing the front of the street, just letting people know that there are cameras in the area and they're under surveillance. So again, visit today, unannounced visit today, only one sign really where we asked them to put it. So it seems like that is taking care of itself. And you know, this is, this is an ongoing, it's not just the dogs. I'm trying to help a neighborhood in a way, trying so that, you know, hopefully, these people can get along a little bit better. You know, it's a little bit more enjoyable for the people in McLennan Park when they walk by to be able to see. And in the end, hopefully, the kennel owners will have, you know, a cleaned-up piece of property that they can be proud of too. So it's a little bit more than just this, but again, I think they're moving in the right direction. And I hope that the neighbors can get along there. I don't know whether that will ever really happen, but that is my hope.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Captain Flynn. I don't mean to be picky and bring up all these issues, but these have been all the issues of the neighbors. But I certainly am grateful that you're working not only with the neighborhood but for the neighborhood to try to get some peace and some calm and some continuity to work together. So I think this is an issue neighborhood in action that we need to continue on with. And I appreciate all the time and future time that you and others on APD, including the Animal Control Officer, need to put on this. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question. So just a little historical context. So this kennel came into existence because the owner had a dog or a couple of dogs, and then they had puppies and they kept all the puppies. And so it was a place that wasn't a kennel, but then when they had the puppies, decided to keep them, it became a kennel?
That's correction.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you, Captain Flynn, for the detailed police report and the pictures that you took on October 9th. It really did give us a good context. And I was out at the property on the McLennan Field side of it over the weekend. I did notice a big difference from the date that you took the pictures until this weekend. So I know this has been a difficult situation going back and forth between the neighbors, and we appreciate the work that you're doing on that. And just a couple of questions. In your report, you cite the October 30th date as the day you'll be returning to the property to see what progress has been made. The abutting neighbor is aware of that date as well. And I know you spoke with them on October 11th, but I just wondering, since the 11th, has it been any further need to go out other than your announced visit today?
Uh, no, not since the 11th. Again, today was just kind of an unannounced visit so that I could have a perspective of the property as of today, so that knowing that I would be here tonight. So again, that was just a kind of a stop-in and see where things are at so that there were no changes. I really hadn't heard anything since the 11th from the property. I know there's some other things going on, but related to this, no, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, Captain Flynn, for all your work on this. I know this is taking up a good amount of your time and we appreciate the work that you're doing here. Just one question in general, how many of these kennel licenses do we have in Arlington, if you know?
I'd be honest, I don't know, to be honest.
All right, thank you. All right, so Mr. Town Manager, if you can promote Mrs. O'Rourke, we'll have her speak on the issue for three minutes, take questions from the board, and then we'll hear from the other party.
Hi, so first off, this is Daniel O'Rourke. So I'll talk to him about having my wife, if that's okay. How are you?
Sure. If you could just say your name, say your property address, just so.
My name is Daniel O'Rourke and I live at 65 Bethesda Street, which is the property abutting. The property here under question. So we really appreciate everyone's time this evening. And I want to address, obviously, kind of why, you know, the petition was created by 25 people in the community, all of whom, all of whom live in close proximity to this property. So there's really two major elements to the reason why this was filed. There's really, obviously, the danger that these dogs present. But also, it's also a concept of the breach of the peace issue with the noise that these dogs also present as well. So we've lived next door to them for about seven years. Over the course of the last seven years, we have asked them on a personal level and have asked the police to become involved on many other levels to try to get them to stop the dogs, of which eight of, and there are eight of them, to stop their incessant barking every time a human being or a dog walks by their property. And the problem is, as someone just pointed out very accurately, the property, it borders McLennan Field. So there's a dog or a human being walking by every five minutes. Every time that happens, the dogs lose their minds. Their dogs were never socialized with other people or with other animals. So they are not, they think that anything that walks by is a threat. And when this used to go on at 4:30 in the morning, 4:45 in the morning, for years. The lack of care that the owners of that property showed their neighbors, when they allowed their dogs to go outside and literally bark their heads off at anything that walks by is insane. I'm sure there isn't anyone on this phone call who would say they wouldn't be mortified if a single dog, let alone eight dogs, were outside barking ferociously at anyone who moved past them. The reason why we're actually having this entire conversation today is that we have three children. Our youngest is a seven-year-old daughter who goes to Pierce, obviously. We bought her a puppy. When the dogs saw the puppy on our property, they absolutely saw that as a threat. Four of the dogs invaded our property. And my brother-in-law, we had two of his dogs here at the time, were also on the property. And the dogs made every single solitary effort they could to come onto the property, and they finally succeeded. It was like the Marines hitting the beach. One of the owners was actually in the yard and watched it all happen. My brother-in-law would be more than happy to attest to what happened. His dog was attacked. His dog fled as soon as these dogs showed up. Their dog pursued that dog up the stairs to our porch. My brother-in-law is a phenomenal athlete. He's a National Tennis Player. He barely got the dog out of the dog's jaws before tragedy struck. If my daughter had been outside with our puppy by herself when those four dogs invaded our property, it could have been exactly what happened to Richard Walker, which I'm sure you can go and look that up. A great question was asked a moment ago, why in God's name does anybody have eight dogs? And by the way, I have to imagine this is the only property in the town that has a commercial, has a license in order to have eight dogs. They don't have them because of breeders. They don't have them because they're running a, you know, a process where they're trying to help dogs. They have them there because of their negligence. They kept every puppy. And like I said, these dogs are extremely-
Okay, just coming on three minutes, if you can wrap up and then we'll go over for questions.
So there's two major things, the nuisance factor, and there's no marching prayer. If those dogs get out again, they could absolutely go after another child or another dog. The fencing is appropriate and that's very helpful, but the problem is they can get out in many other ways and have done so, even after the fence and even after reinforced has happened. They get out through their garage and because the garage abuts the backyard. The police have done their job. Captain Flynn has done a phenomenal job. But unfortunately, this is the, as you mentioned, this is how this guy's decision is through this body here. So we appreciate your time this evening and happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, I will turn to the board. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you very much. So with the barking issues, have you, are you saying that the dogs are left out most of the night? Because you said it's fairly early in the morning that they-
They'll let the dogs out very early in the morning, but they also leave them out all day. So and obviously, we're all trying to work them home these days. So the, yeah, the dogs could be barking, eight dogs could be barking at any moment, pretty much day or night.
And obviously the remedy you're looking for is the removal of all of the dogs.
Right, the remedy that we're looking for, first off, we don't want any harm to come to these dogs, honestly. That is not what we're doing here today. What we're doing here today. Is to try to find some remedy that exists where a kennel license for eight dogs is not necessary in a densely populated neighborhood. Surrounded by families with children. The 25 people who signed this. If you were to interview all of them, they would all tell you they're worried about the danger to their children. And they're worried and really fed up with the noise. No one should have eight dogs in a densely populated neighborhood. So.
Okay. I, I don't think I've any further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Mrs. Mahon.
I guess my question, I hate to do this to Captain Flynn, would be. Because there's some ambiguity here. Do you see as the, the petition from the 25 residents, they're asking us, has there been a. Kennel of eight permit issued to this. Residents and is that what you're hearing or your interpretation of what they're asking?
So my interpretation is that this was a renewal for an ongoing kennel license. And again, there was a visit to the property earlier in the day on August 19th, on August 19th. Where the ACO and a member of the Board of Health had gone out and viewed the property and then that day, later in that day, there was the escape. That I believe that Mr. O'Rourke was talking about. Which brought my attention to it and really brought my involvement to it. And, and, and when I went out, I strictly looked at the, the two points, that, that, some of the two original points that are on the licenses. One is. Is it secure and two, is it safe? At that point, I, I determined that I didn't think it was secure and that's why we asked the kennel owners to address the fencing issue. Or at least. Make a decision, you know. The same with, with you, Mr. O'Rourke, that I said, listen, you have eight dogs. This, this is your decision, but. I mean, there was some great expense spent on that fencing and I, I was, I was a little shocked that they, they went that route, but they did. So they repaired the fencing, but then with new fencing came a clear view through both yards. Until the owners of the kennel put some slats in it, but still the dogs, you know, they, they can sense when there's another dog on the other side of the fence. And they can still see out into McLennan Park. So my, my view on it, my, what I was attempting to do was make sure that one, the kennel was secure. And two, that the kennel was safe within that. And hopefully by doing that, I, I might be able to improve maybe the, the relations, but at least what's going on in the neighborhood. But I, I, I understand Mr. O, Mr. and Mrs. O'Rourke's concerns in regards to the barking and the noise and what have you. I don't know how you address that. But as far as what we were looking in the kennel license wise, that's what we were trying to do.
Okay, and I, I don't know, this is probably going further in depth than, than we need to, but. In terms of these. Eight canines, which. Concerned about the neighbors and also about the canines. Because there seems to be so much issue of them being outside. In terms of whether, is the outside of this kennel that has eight canines. Set up that that's where they're going to be for the late fall, early winter?
I would imagine so, at least, at least during the course of the daytime. I believe the animals are all brought in at home, in, into the home at night. Again, I don't know exactly when they're putting the animals out in the, in the yard in the morning and how late they're staying out at night. You know, I pulled some numbers for the last year of how many calls we've had out in that neighborhood. Some animal complaints, but again, my focus. Was at, at the time that the dogs were breaking through the fence and escaping and not only. Getting onto the O'Rourke property, but they were running amok in, in the neighborhood. So there were, there were other concerns there. So that's. What I, we immediately addressed that and if the kennel license was going to be renewed, the yard needed to be made more safe and in essence, basically cleaned up.
If you can, in the past three, six, 12 months, how many noise or other complaints have you gotten? Sorry, did my question get through or should I try again?
It, it kind of broke up, but I think you were going how many, maybe this last six, 12 months, how many noise complaints that we got out in that area? Well, I pulled the numbers for 65 and in 59, the, the neighbors and. 59, there were 14 total calls to that home over the course of the year. Four or five, five of them had to do with barking dogs or dogs escaping. And then pulled the. For, for O'Rourke residents and there were five total. Four of those had to do with either the dogs escaping or barking.
Okay, thank you. I'm still sort of struggling, you know, if I were to make the motion right now, it sounds like Captain Flynn and ACO Welch are. Working with the neighbors. But I don't want to. Appear as though I'm minimizing. The O'Rourke's and other neighbors. Concerns in this area. So I guess I'd look to my colleagues in terms of questions they have and what motion comes out of that. Thank you.
Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you, all the questions. How, how long has the dogs been there? To whomever, you know, can I answer that question?
I think probably about six years, my guess.
Six years, okay. So when the dogs almost attacked, you know, when you, when your brother-in-law, was that reported?
Yes, in fact, we called the animal control officer right then and there. Learning that she had signed up on the property earlier that day. We called them immediately because we felt it was such a breach that. That it was, and we knew that their fence. Was insufficient, you know, to protect us. We had warned them that we were getting a puppy in advance. And had been told that they would try to reinforce it, but it was a chicken wire fence, basically.
Gotcha. So I guess maybe this question goes to Mr. Heine. It's like, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, why it is that the town would allow a kennel. With that many dogs in that kind of environment, because it's kind of predictable. Be that if you have that many dogs, eh, there's going to be a noise issue, eh, and so. So I mean, I think this problem, this needs to be solved at a different level, eh, so. But I'm just trying to understand maybe the rationale behind the bylaw, anything that allows such a thing to exist?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Mr. Diggins, under the town bylaws, a. Personal kennel license is mandatory for anybody who has more than five dogs, three months or older. So I'm not sure what the genesis of the kennel license. Scheme, schema is, but under our current bylaws. You have the option to get a kennel license is if you have four fewer dogs and. For five or more. You have to have a kennel license. So. There are obviously some criteria for maintaining a kennel. But at present. We have a license available for folks who have, or want to have more than five dogs.
Right, right. So you're still, to the town council again, still, so then if. One doesn't get the kennel license, you're limited to the number of dogs you could have.
That's correct. So if you're not, if you don't qualify for a personal kennel license, you can't have that many dogs on.
So, okay, alright, thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. DeCressey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions from Mr. O'Rourke. Looking at the, the citizen's petition and I think we've touched on the issues with security and the fencing. We've touched on excessive barking and, and you reference other conditions. That constitute a nuisance. Is there anything else beyond those two that have occurred? Since 2016, as I see that date referenced in the petition as well?
I think, I think the petition covers really the major issues that we wanted to bring up today.
Okay, alright, and, and I, I just want to clarify, did you say that since. Let's go back to the beginning of the month, have, have the dogs escaped?
Yes.
Within the last 10 days?
Yes, the dogs escaped. In fact, there was a. So after they, on, on. On 10-3, the dogs escaped again, after the fence was put in and after it was reinforced, the dogs, dogs escaped again. When the neighbor, my wife was standing in the front of our house, when the neighbor ran by chasing the dogs down the street. He said while he was running by that they just got out through the garage. The garage. Door opens into the backyard and the garage door had been left open. I won't tell you what he then later told a neighbor why they got out, but it was. Essentially, you know, it could easily be the defamation case easily. It could be defamation case because he blamed my wife for it. And, and involved bolt cutters, which is literally insane. But, so. You know, the fact, this going back to what I said, there's no margin for error. If the dogs get out. Then they certainly can. The fence is great and I, I appreciate them doing that. But their negligence could result in them getting out through just simple, symbol, not civilly, not closing, opening, not closing a door.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, did you have an additional question?
I actually do. I was actually holding up my fingers to say four, my reading of the, of the, of the bylaws. I just wanted to clarify through you with, with counsel. If. We, we were to revoke the kennel license, my understanding is that. The dog owners would still be permitted to maintain four dogs license under the, the usual. Procedures. A standard.
Yes.
That's correct, Mr. Carroll.
Okay. And a further question. I know that, that the laws on. Vicious dog hearings, which we've only had a couple, I think, in the time that I've been on here, have changed over the last couple of years. Where. Really the only remedies available to us with a. Vicious dog, and I don't think, I don't know if we're talking about. This, this is different. This isn't actually vicious dog hearing. This is a kennel hearing. So under a vicious dog hearing, I know that. We are not allowed to demand the, the transfer of, of an animal. To, to another individual or, or out of town. We have to either mandate additional. Humane constraints or. Putting down euthanization, but, but that is not the requirement under, under this. Is, is that correct? If we were to lift the, the, the kennel license. And give a period of time, the, the dog owners essentially would have. A, a period of time to, to, to sell or, or give away. I guess four of the dogs, in this case, down, down to a, a total of four.
Mr. Chairman, man?
Yes.
That's correct, Mr. Carroll. So we're here on a kennel hearing. A dangerous dog hearing is, would require another process and basically the remedies available. Are more or less what you've described and that would have to be specific to an animal. We need to know.
Right.
Sort of which dog, you know, was, you know, allegedly bit or harmed another animal or a person. So, yes, in theory, if you revoked this. Class A2 personal kennel license and they. You know, were to limit the number of dogs to four dogs, they could still keep four dogs. Under the current bylaw, notwithstanding any. You know, other concerns like a dangerous dog hearing with respect to one of the four dogs or all the four dogs, something in that nature. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then my further question then, I guess through you, Mr. Chair, to, to Mr. O'Rourke is, would. Would a reduction in number address the, the, the situation? Because if the situation is negligence and keeping open the. Garage door or whatnot, I mean, it doesn't seem that the number of dogs would make a difference. Reading the report, it looks like two of them are, are usually off during the day with. One of the owners at work. Is that? Is that correct?
We, we really don't know. It doesn't seem to have a lot of consistency to that, but like I said, we, we don't want anything to happen to the dogs. We don't want them harmed in any way, shape or form. We just want our safety assured and the nuisance factor somehow mediated. That's all we're asking for. So the number of dogs, if you took the license away, they would get, they would have a smaller number of dogs and that could alleviate it in some respects. So.
But it sounds like the, the, the core. Behaviors are really would have, have to, have to change. It's, it's not strictly. An issue of the number of dogs other than the noise, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My questions have been touched on, but the first one to Tony Heine. So for a resident or a personal kennel license, is there anything in there that. Talks about a commercial use or is a personal kennel license, just people that, that. Specifically want to own more than four dogs for personal use? If that makes sense.
So. A personal kennel license under the Arlington bylaws is basically just defined as. A pack or collection of more than five dogs, three months or older, owned and kept under. Single ownership for private, personal purposes. That doesn't exclude folks from breeding dogs under a personal kennel license. You know, for the purposes of like showing the breed or, you know, sporting activity. But, and I believe they can also sell them, but there are some prohibitions on a. Personal kennel license that don't exist on a commercial breeder kennel. Or a commercial boarding or training kennel. So there are. Different standards for. Some of these things and they have different sort of operational. Parameters, I guess, is the best way I can put it. In terms of the things that you're allowed to do and not allowed to do. Based on the type of kennel license you have.
And as you mentioned, so do, under our bylaws, we also have separate commercial kennel licenses as well?
We have several different types of other kennels from ranging from breeders. And. Basically boarding or training kennels. That, you know, would be oriented towards, you know, somebody boarding their dog if they went on out of town or. You know, places where folks bring their dog to be trained for a certain number of hours a day.
And Captain Flynn, just relative to the noise and putting aside the fact that we. This is used as a personal kennel, what would be the remedy if a resident had, say, two or three dogs that with. With a number of excessive noise complaints on that property? Or is there a remedy?
I, I think, I think there may be a few remedies. I think, you know, the animal control officer might be able to speak to the owners about, you know, perhaps retraining. You know, there are devices that they can, you, you can purchase that to help kind of train the dogs in regards to the barking, et cetera. Little bit out of my realm, but I do think, I do think there are some, some avenues that, that can go. I, again, I understand eight dogs is, is. It's a great deal, but, you know. Four dogs on the property as well. I think there's a very good chance that the four dogs could. Make more noise than, than folks want to hear. Today, when I was on the property. There were two, at times, three dogs on the, in the backyard. Again, when I showed up, I was, I was kind of very quiet and I, I just observed the property for a little while before and. You know, the dogs were very well behaved. Some people had walked by in McLennan Park. They didn't have any animals with them, but some, some, you know, some folks with a stroller and what have you. And at the time. Your works, they were in their yard and their puppy was in the yard, but. You know. Eight dogs together could be, could be totally different. So it's, it's hard for me to say, to be honest with you, but. Again, those, those are my observations anyways.
And were there any other questions from Mr. O'Rourke, O'Rourke from the board? Show hands, nope. Alright, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. We're gonna promote Mr. Graziano as well now for. Time being.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Graziano with us?
I'm looking, uh, Mr., what, what's the first name? Do you know? Well, I see it now. I, I.
Scott or Jay?
Okay, I, I see an S W. Oh, that person.
Mr. Graziano, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, Mr. Rock stated I had eight dogs. I got one that's thirteen years old. All right. I have a mother and three boys and three females. Right? And I have a, the English one, the English one that's thirteen years old. She's gonna be getting put to sleep. So that's gonna bring it down to seven. Right? And my dogs are very well managed dogs. And when people come by McLallan Park, They have an unleashed law. Mr. Rock saying my dogs fight and bark viciously. No. There's some people that were, had worked for the town that come by. There was like some people that were Arlington police officers and everything. Came by with this incident and they were watching my dogs. There's a lady that comes by that makes them all sit and they're all trained and they give them cookies one by one. And my dogs are very grateful. They come in at night and not out at four thirty in the morning. Mr. Rock is trying to make a remarkable thing to try to save four thirty. They go out at the time that the ordinance is supposed to be for the dogs. I was very well aware of it from Diane when she talked to me. And today, I had an episode with Mr. And Mrs. O'Rourke. And we had to go straighten it out.
Okay, and if you could just, first off, just state your name, just so we know who was speaking.
Okay, my name's Scott Graziano.
And your address?
Fifty-nine Thursday Street.
All right, I'll turn to the board for any questions or comments for you. Uh, Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wonder if I could ask Mr. Graziano, are the dogs spayed and neutered?
Yes, they are. They had to. All right, they're all spayed and noodled, neutered. You know, prior for the kennel's license, they did not need to be, you know, mating with other dogs.
Okay. Um, my, my next question is, um, so one of the things that we've heard is that, that, um, Despite the, the fencing, that, that the dogs have been able to escape, um, through the garage. What, what kind of measures, uh, might you be able to take to, to prevent that?
And we got all new garage doors because we were going to a, a state battle with my parents when they passed away. And we had to wait till all the stuff was done because we were dealing with a family dispute on a family estate matter. So after that, we, uh, told Captain Flynn that we were gonna do everything to the property. We were doing everything till the estate now is over, but I had taken, My brother and I had taken some money. We redone the fence. After we done the fence, there were, there were damage to our fence because people were cutting it and letting the dogs out prior Because they wanted to let the dogs, dogs escape, which was wrong. Right? And we had been having an ongoing dispute. And, uh, we ended up, we put brand new garage doors up. And the dogs cannot get out the new garage doors because we bought, bought brand new stainless steel garage doors. So that it sealed and we want to be able to have the inside. So we can be able to have our vehicles in there or cars and so forth, you know?
And, and you're careful to keep them closed?
Yes, we've all keep them closed all the time. We put brand new swinging gates, which Mr. Flynn told me it needed new gates. It came down and he liked the way it was designed. I had a buddy of mine bring down some wrap, Which they used on the, which we used on Thursday Street. We used on, uh, around the kennel. Um, so the dogs can't dig holes to get out. And the dogs, we had now have been That stuff down with Mr. Flynn was very like, liked the, how I told him how I was doing it. Because I'm a, a designer, an ex landscape designer, and I did all the Taught what he told me to do. And him and I agreed upon it. And I kept my promise with Mr. Flynn and he was very happy when he saw the fence that I spent all that money for.
And my understanding is, so you have seven dogs and one of them is near end of life?
Pardon me?
You have seven dogs now and one is near.
Yes, yes, near to be put to sleep. I hate to, but had her since she was a puppy. Excuse me.
But that's difficult to know.
Yeah, it's tough when you try to get, you know, have something that you have since a puppy, you know, it's like a family member.
Um, do, do you generally, when you let the, uh, the dogs out, let all of them at once?
We have a door now on the door so that we have the, the dog door. They go outside. And they go to the bathroom and, and when it's like inclement weather, I let them out. Because, you know, I'm not letting the dogs, you know, do their thing in the house. They run outside, use the bathroom, come running in. They go in their, their rooms and they have rooms where they sleep. And they don't harm anything. And then, and when it's raining out, they won't go outside because of the Boring rain. They don't like the inclement weather.
So they go in and out on their own?
Yes, sir.
Um, and is it my understanding that two of the dogs are generally taken, uh, with one of you?
With me and my truck. I take, I take Coco and the mother in the truck with me.
Okay.
And when the dogs got out, Mr. Rock said all eight of them came out. Shelby's too old to be running in their property. So they, with the math that they, they occurred to use, they need, need to regen that. Because I, there was, he claims eight. And I, Shelby was in the house. I took two. So there was only four that went out, out, out in their property.
That's what I heard from his testimony as well.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think I have, uh, you know, no further questions. I, I think it's probably clear, uh, Mr. Graziano, About the, the, um, why, you know, I, I used to have German shepherds too. They, they can cause a lot of fear to, Um, especially with young, young children. So it's.
Yeah, my dogs are not a rottweiler. My dogs are not pit bulls. They're husky labs.
Yeah.
They're lovable. They love to play. They love children. But I wasn't home when this happened. My brother and my girlfriend's son was there. And when the incident was occurred, we have cameras. I was out in Pennsylvania when, When we had enough, two episodes. Right? The episode was that Diane Welch came with the episode about the, the dogs went into her property. The second episode, I was accused for, for neglect and noise allowance. Well, Mrs. O'Rourke bounced a rock off my dog's head. Videotaped me and turned me into the MSPCA, which was wrong. And I had a witness to that, which they were watching it on my cameras in my house.
Okay.
By intimidating the dogs, videotaping them constantly. I think that's intimidating my dogs, going out by the fence, jumping up and down because I had went up to her and told her That you need to stop. You're harassing me. Her and her husband were laughing at me. And they took me to court today and tried to get me for a harassment charge. It didn't even get no further than, than four or five words. They could, they tried to use me as a, My brother, which I was on the road. I had attorney Fahey that helped me. And attorney Fahey, they had a restraining order on me because they were gonna use the restraining order on me To prior of this, uh, kennel's license.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have no further questions.
Mrs. Mahan?
Um, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Graziano, um, is it you and your spouse who reside in the house? Or are there other people?
It's my girlfriend, Diane.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Um, and, um, It sounds like both of you work during the day. My question is, to me, I, I understand it's eight, um, dogs That one unfortunately, um, it seems as though she's closer to the rainbow bridge, as they say, for dogs. Um, when unfortunately they, they're anticipated to pass away. Is it your intention where both of you, Just the two of you and seven other dogs that you feel you have the time to, to commit to those dogs? Or do you have plans to, um, perhaps, uh, rehome some of them?
I commit to have them because they are no harm. We come home, they're very lovable. I take them out for walks. It's not like I'm decollecting them, Mrs. Milan. I, I take them, I treat them like they're my children. Right? They're my, I brought them up when they were puppies. They had never had a problem when they were out here. Right? When the problem was with Mr. O'Rourke, got their dog. They were using their dog to intimidate my dog and we had it all on video.
Okay, and I guess my other question would be, when, um, you and your girlfriend are at work, not home, Where are the eight dogs? Are they outside or inside?
Two goes, two goes with me. All right, it's Coco, my chocolate one and the mother. And the mother dog is very, very calm and everything. They go in the truck with me. I leave Friday night, I mean, I, excuse me, I leave Monday night, I'm home Friday. And Saturday and Sunday, I'm home with the dogs. And I take them outside. I give them a good brushing. I maintain them and everything. They're, they're off, their shots are all up to date. Everything's perfect. Just that we were having problems with people intimidating my dogs. Which, uh, the dogs are lovable by people that come by, by McLallan's Park. They, they do have an unleashed law at certain hours. We have people that come by with their dogs Running back and forth the length of my fence, Mrs. Milan. And they not harming anybody. And then they stop and they, when they stop doing it, they give my dog cookies and my cookies. They give them cookies and they run up on the stairs and they sleep.
Okay, so when, when you're, when you're gone, Monday through Friday with Coco and his mom, the other six dogs are outside?
They're either, they're outside. My brother's home. Shelby let out, we let out. But she, she goes out and it comes in and lays down. So the other ones, they go out. If my brother's out in the hammock, they'll lay next to my brother in the hammock. And they're calm as can be. You know, they're, they're not biters, but they love people. And the enjoyment of people that come by, by, uh, promises, they like to have, to see their dogs Running with my dogs. And people next door were very, were very upset about it. Is because, uh, they were like, again, there were some people that, uh, like, announced to me They were Arlington police officers that came by with dogs. They were watching the, uh, situation that was going on With my next door neighbors and, uh, there was another woman that was on a, um, Friends of other people that I know that knew the dogs because I used to take some of the dogs and to go Walking down the bike path together and they never had a problem.
Okay, um, and here's my dilemma. And, um, I, I'm assuming, Mr. Graziano, that your brother is probably not on
No, he's right. Jay, where are you? Can you come over here, please? Mrs. Milan would like to see you.
And, and what my concern is, I have, um, twenty-five of your neighbors, um, who, who have a complaint about The kennel that you have because you, you have these eight dogs. And admittedly by, um, what you've testified to, Monday through Friday, you take Coco and his mom, um, and the other six dogs are, we're not sure. I can't take from you what it is they're saying, um, that is happening with that. And I, I guess what I'm trying to do is balance the twenty-five neighbors' concern And perhaps any recommendations from the ACO Diane Welch or Captain Flynn that might be there. But if you have your, um, brother who lives with you or who, who stopped by one day, does he live?
He owns the house. All right, I live with my brother. All right. And these dogs are with them. And they never have an issue with Jay. They love Jay. And my brother Jay, believe it or not, when he goes upstairs, They, they have the, the dogs have a, they go up there and they, my brother has things in the floor for the dogs to lay on. And there's no problems at all. My brother's right here. If you can see him on camera. My brother Jay, he's, his name is Jay Graziano. Can you see him, Mrs. Milan?
Uh, no, I, I can see your name. I can't see you, but I can't see him.
Uh, how can I click on my name?
Uh, if you.
Oh, Scott, my video?
Dot video, correct.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I apologize. I probably should have asked that sooner.
Yeah, I didn't even know. All right, now you can see me.
Okay, is that your brother behind you?
Yes, that's my brother Jay. He's my, my oldest brother. He's the only brother I have left.
God bless him. And Jay, you live with Scott? Are Scott and Jay live together?
Yep, we lived together for a long time.
Fifty-seven years for me and how many years for you? How old are you? All right. We were in this neighborhood since nineteen forty-six and my dad built the house and, and this was all farm country.
Okay, and so just real quick, Jay, um, when, when Scott's away with Coco and, and Coco's mom, You're home in the house with the rest of the dogs and sort of overseeing their keep?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, I guess I'll, uh, I apologize. I didn't mean to get both of you on at the same time.
I don't know how this works. It's just new to us, Mrs. Milan, you know?
Yeah, yeah. But no, God bless. It is to me too. So, um, I guess I'll wait to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say, Um, as well as, um, any, uh, short term or midterm recommendations from Captain Flynn and ACO Welch. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna be popping back and forth between desktops here where my questions are. So, um, to you, Mr. Chair, um, when you, um, had intimidation, did you report that, uh, Mr. Graziano?
Intimidations on the dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, um, I had told Diane Welch with the intimidations of the dogs, they were being camped. But, and, uh, I was on the road and my brother Joe, Jay was there when the MSPCA came by. And, uh, her son Alan Gomo. And, uh, I had a problem with Mrs. O'Rourke. And the dogs were going up. She was stamping in front of the, uh, fence and she was videotaping and they hit a rock off of Bridget's head. Bridget was screaming and yelling. Mr. Flynn saw me, uh, take the Video and had take, seen me taking them in the house. I should have took her to the veterinarian, but, you know, it happened so quick. I brought, got the dogs all in the house. They were intimidating the dogs. They were, uh, going behind the fence And making their daughter jump in front of my dogs, which we had on the video. And in fact, today they tried to get a restraining order on me and, uh, and Joyce Because of the matter of the stuff that was going on. And I had attorney John Fahy. And I had attorney John Fahey, Joe Fahey, which he was going to try to be on here with me, but he had some others things he had to take care of. He tried to get a restraining order on retaliation and it didn't go through.
So- See, but, but the intimidation incident was reported to Arlington Police?
Yes, it was.
Okay, um, so, um, so, um, did the, did the puppies have any training? You know, were they ever trained?
Yes, when they were puppies, we were having them sit. They were, uh, giving them or giving them a cookie when they would do orders. And they, they sit down, they lay down, and if anybody comes in the house, inside the house, somebody comes up to the house, they would bark, let us know if we were like downstairs doing laundry and everything. And they would go up to the window. They're no harm or nothing. They don't, they're not packs of wolves. They're not things like that where the people are trying to word them. They're lovable dogs. Take sometimes, take sometimes one of each, but we take the mother dog because the mother dog is always begging us and and everything. They take us, so we take Coco and stuff. I have, uh, they're good dogs, sir. They never had a issue. But today, they, today, it really hurt me when they turn around and use my brother's name in the courthouse to try to say I was the one that was with Diane Welch, which I wasn't, and we had that matter resolved today.
Yeah, um, so, do you think the dogs could be trained to be quieter?
Yes, they can. They can be, you tell them to lay down, they lay down. You tell them to, uh, come in. We do not let the dogs stay out after seven because I know there's two neighbors on the street. They let their dogs out after hours. I had gone to go out to the store. A dog that was on a driveway and when I came out, I scared him. He was barking and growling at me. I was feared that I was gonna get bit. I didn't know whose dog it was, but when my dog saw it in the house, they were barking and the dog ran.
Okay, um, so just one more question. This is actually on through you, Mr. Chair, to, um, the town council. What's the limit on the number of dogs that someone can have in a kennel? This is just a curiosity question about the bylaw itself. So we know that more than four triggers the kennel, private kennel. What's the maximum people can have?
Mr. Chairman? So, Mr. Diggins, I don't actually see a maximum outlined in the personal kennel bylaw in terms of a cap.
Right.
There may be one at state law where they, in time in which they can't, you know, adequately house the dogs under the rules and regulations that we have, but I don't actually see an maximum.
I hear you. All right, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Corsey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Graziano.
Good morning, good evening, Mr. Steve. Hi, Steve.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank, thank you. So, just a few questions, and I'm gonna put aside the issues that you have with the O'Rourke's right now, but as Mrs. Mahan said, that there's twenty-three other neighbors who have signed a petition alleging that there's been excessive barking. And what you said earlier this evening is, you know, while your dogs are out, they, they may not be barking. I mean, do you, a, and this is what we're gonna have to grapple with and what if we refer this out for further investigation. Um, so I just want to be clear, when the dogs are out and someone walks by, whether it's on Bethesda Street or behind the property at McLennan Park, do, do they bark at them? Your dogs?
My, when they, they come up, when they come up to the McLennan Park, we have four people that come up every day. They take their dog, they, they have that leash, they, they, they look at law. They take the dogs off the leash and let the dogs run in McLennan Park at certain hours, correct? And, uh,
Yeah.
Am I correct, Steve?
I, I, yeah, I don't know what the restrictions are.
All right, well-
Dogs off leashes.
Yeah. You've been in my backyard, Steve, so you know the town fence in the back, right? My dog goes up there, they run back and forth, all right? They get tired out. They come back inside the house and they sleep. And we close the door so they, we take a nap or whatever. I didn't want to have an issue if we fell asleep, whatever. They, they stay in the house. When I go outside, I take the dogs out with me. They walk around the yard with me. They lay out in the sun on the ground. You don't have an issue. I, when they, people see the, a couple people know my dog's name. They yell their names. They come running to the fence. They give them cookies. I don't have an issue with that because I own, but I get kind of wary of sometimes. Time is like Diane had said to me, be careful who you let people give cookies to because you don't know what you're gonna be giving to the dog.
Right, right. Okay, so, so here's my concern, and you've laid out what you see from your dogs when you're at home. And again, we've only heard testimony from, from Mr. O'Rourke, but we do have the written document. And it appears that there's a number of people that, that say that your dogs are excessively barking. And I'm gonna put aside the issue with the fencing because it seems like you've addressed that.
I have a-
If, yeah, let me just finish for a second. So if you, and from my perspective, if someone's walking by your home and every time someone walks by, the dogs come up to the fence and are barking, that, that's excessive barking. And I think you, you may agree with that. Um, and it's a question maybe whether there is excessive barking. And you installed video cameras. My understanding, there's no sound with those video cameras?
No, by law, you cannot have sound because it's against the law.
Right, okay, all right. So you just have video. How long does your video, does it record video or is it just replay every twenty-four hours?
Was it, Jay?
Yeah.
What's that video of cameras? Is it every hour or every twenty-four hours it records? Every twenty-four hours, Steve, it records.
Okay, and where does it, where does it record? Where, where is it? Is it just in your backyard or is it on the side of the house?
Front of the house, the side of the house, and all four ways.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I mean, we, depending on what we do here, we may, we may ask to take a look at that, but, um, yeah, I think at this point, we've got a difference of, you know, we, we heard from you, Mr. Graziano, we heard from the O'Rourke's. We have the written petition. It seems to me that we've got to do, do a little bit more, maybe to hear from some of the neighbors to see what their perception is because-
I got a question.
We've, we've got two people coming and two different views as to what's going on at the properties.
I have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
Why are these petitions, some of these people are like way over on the other side of town that don't even exist around the area, that don't even hear my dogs? I, it's like people down on Farah Street, there's people on Magnolia Street, uh, Upping Street, they're not even near my neighborhood on this petition.
I'm just looking at the list now and I see, well, there's at least fourteen people on Bethesda Street. And then there are other, there's a Summer Street location, Wright Street is nearby. Um, and West Moreland, Heard, and Forest Street. You're right, there, there are some other streets.
Yeah, the, uh, West Moreland, that's way across town. What they, you know, that's, you know, that's what are over by the reservoir, correct?
Mr. Graziano, the bylaw allows that, so at this time, it's not really appropriate to talk about, you know, that portion of the bylaw, since the bylaw just requires residents.
Yeah, that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Graziano.
All right, and Mr. Graziano, just one question that Mrs. Mahan had touched on and, sorry if the answer was clear. It wasn't clear to me. But you had said that you're away from Monday to Friday. Is there a time when your dogs are in the backyard when no one is at the house?
Uh, with no one's in, in about, you mean, family?
No, no one that lives in your house or that takes care of your dogs is-
Uh, the dogs go in when we go, when we go out. We do not leave the dogs out when we leave the, leave the premises.
All the dogs be inside the house?
Yes.
Unless someone, either you, your girlfriend or your brother was at the house.
My brother would be the one. If my brother has to go to doctor's appointment, it's John. Dogs stay in the house. I, if no one isn't around, the dogs are in the house. If, uh, say like my girlfriend and son or, or it's here, keep me outside with the dogs, sit on the porch, watch them move. You know, be out on the porch. And then when he comes in, he calls them all in because if he wants to go take off down to his friend's house, oh, the dogs are inside the house. Don't leave them out when no one's home. Trust me.
Your answer was, was clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so Mr. Chap, so Mr. Graziano, thank you for, unless anyone from the board has any further questions, by shoulder hands. Thank you for, um, yeah, Mr. Carroll.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify that last question, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So, Mr. Graziano, you said that the dogs are called in, but you had said there's a dog door they can go in and out of. Is the-
Yeah, but we lock the door.
Lock the door.
Door, Joe. All right, we don't leave the door open. We, we, we lock the door. Only time we're, we're home, we let the dogs go in and out of their dog door.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Graziano. We're gonna put you back down with the rest of the attendees and then we'll have a discussion amongst the board, okay? All right, so I'll turn to the board for any question, comments, or motions. Mr. Carroll?
I gotta be honest, this, this is one of the most difficult things I've dealt with on eight and a half years on the board to cut through. You know, my, my understanding, if we could clarify through Captain Flynn, was that there were some, there were measures that were prescribed to Mr. Graziano to control the situation. Work is underway, but there was actually a deadline of October thirtieth given to, um, to, to comply. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Carroll. And again, those are corrective measures for the property itself and, you know, for the security of the property, to make sure the property is secure and that the property is safe. Kind of a whole other issue is, is the dog barking issue and what have you. Again, I was at the property today. There were three dogs on the property today. It wasn't an issue, but, you know, six or eight dogs is different than three dogs at times. And, and the removal of the, of a solid fence and a chain link fence being put up, now you've created a little less of a barrier between. So the dogs know when there's another dog in the other yard. I think they've done a pretty good job, not only with the fence, but putting up a barrier within the fence, the slats that they put up in the fence. But again, there's, there's gonna be times where the dogs know there's something on the other side of the fence and they're gonna, you know, that's how they communicate. They're gonna bark and, and do what they do. Now, there's training. There's, there are other things that I, I think could happen. Um, but you're still talking about seven dogs. And even if you pulled a license, I think you're talking about four dogs being in a backyard, right smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. No question they care about the dogs and, and what have you, but I think they could probably take some more measures in regards to keeping the dogs more quiet. It seems like that's, that's really gonna be the next obstacle.
So I, I guess I would, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, and ask town council. I, I know you went through some of what we could do as actions, but I think I need some reiteration. Are we in a position to, what are certain conditions for, for maintaining the kennel license?
So, Mr. Carroll, at, so set forth in the bylaw, at this hearing, the select board, quote, "may cause an investigation of the kennel that is subject of the petition or take such other action as it deems prudent." So I think the board can certainly, um, you know, take action relative to the license. It can, uh, cause further investigation in terms of, you know, the information that you've heard tonight. Whether you feel like it would be helpful to understand more about how the situation, uh, proceeds. You know, if you want further information from the animal control officer, from Captain Flynn, from the health department, anybody that you want, you're entitled to get more information. You don't have to make a decision tonight. If you're inclined to make a decision tonight, that language of, or take such other action as it deems prudent is pretty broad. After the hearing and any investigation or further proceedings, you don't have to wrap the hearing up tonight. You could continue it. Again, you can suspend or revoke the license or take other action to, quote, "regulate the kennel" that you deem prudent. Or you can dismiss the petition. So, um, that's, that's, you've got a pretty broad range of options available to you, and I know sometimes that makes life harder than easier, but-
Yeah, it sure does. Because where I'm, where I'm at right now, you know, as far as the physical restraints for the, for the property, it sounds like a lot of action has been taken there. And that it may be worthwhile to, um, you know, to see, see how that, that, that plays out. If, if those actions have been effective. I mean, clearly, there's been investment in the fencing and visible screening and, and the items underneath. So what that leaves us with is, is the noise. And I couldn't tell you how, how you could effectively control that beyond what's being, you know, represented to us that the dogs aren't left unattended in the backyard. Other than, I think Mr. Diggins raised the, the question as to whether, there is any type of training that they could be employed. And what I heard in the answer was that it wasn't a formal training program. And so I think my inclination on this is to refer this back to APD and the animal control officer to, um, you know, work with the Grazianos on, on a, um, a, a plan of, of, you know, humane training or other measures that might be employed to, to, uh, attempt to control the barking. That, that's, 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 that seems to me to be the, the next logical step of what we're really trying to do is, is, is address. Trying to address the danger of the dogs getting out. Sounds like that's, that's underway and Captain Flynn, it sounds like you're, you're on that. Um, but, but, um, the, the, the noise issue is, is one that's, uh, I'm not a dog trainer. I, uh, I just keep my dog inside because she's barking. So it's, it seems like we, we should be looking to some of the expertise we have on staff with, uh, animal control officer Walsh. So that'd be my motion. I know it's a little muddy, but, um, you know, my motion would be to refer it back to APD and the animal control officer to, um, work with the Grazianos on, on a, um, concrete steps that could be taken in the form of training or other humane measures that, that might control the, um, the barking problem.
Mr. Chair, if I could second that and-
Yes.
Very short comment?
Yep.
Um, the, the petition from the citizen's position, petition, um, from twenty-five, twenty-six people speak to the noise complaints and barking issues. An unreasonable event of barking. It, it doesn't say anything beyond that. So if, if, I'd like to second Mr. Carroll's motion and with Mr. Carroll and Captain Flynn's guidance, whether it should be a three or six month, report back, uh, whether it should be January or April, um, in terms of when this is brought before the board again, or if Mr. Carroll just wants to leave it open-ended, that Captain Flynn will let us know when that should come back on the agenda. But I will second Mr. Carroll's motion.
Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Chair, well, I guess my answer to that would be, I, I don't know how long it takes to teach an old dog new tricks. So, uh, I'd have to, um, that, that's one where I think I, I might have to defer to the recommendation of the, uh, ACO as well. I mean, I would hope that, that within, within three to six months that this, this could be resolved. I'm gonna assume that as the weather gets colder, that these dogs won't be out as much. within three to six months that this, this could be resolved. I'm going to assume that as the weather gets colder, these dogs won't be out as much.
And, and if I could ask Captain Flynn whether three or six months might be the appropriate time to revisit this? If he feels he can opine on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. I, I, I think that would be fair. Again, I, I would agree with Mr. Carroll, though. We're gonna, we're gonna run into some colder weather soon. And if what Mr. Graziano is telling us about the dogs not liking to be outside and inclement weather and whatnot, the dogs are going to be inside probably more than they're outside now, and they're generally going to be quieter. So I don't know where this will kind of rear its head again in the springtime, but I am, I have, I would agree. I think, I think that's a plan. I would have a conversation with the ACO and see what kind of steps can be taken in regards to training and, and what maybe other communities have done with these kind of problems and, and try and put some sort of a plan together and then revisit this. And whatever you think is fair, three to six months is, it sounds fair.
Chairman, may I?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that I understand the motion by Mr. Carroll and Mrs. Mahan. From what I'm hearing, it sounds like the determination of this body, if the motion were successful, would be that the kennel license is conditioned upon, basically the finding of the board is that the maintenance of this kennel license is conditioned on satisfactory, you know, completion of a training program as recommended by the Animal Control Officer or APD, rather than referring this for investigation and keeping this hearing process open. Is that correct?
Mr. Carroll.
Well firstly, I think I noted that just it's, it's training or other humane measures to control barking is maybe recommended by the, by the Animal Control Officer. That, that's for starters. I, I guess it probably makes sense for us to get a report back in six months from, from the, the ACO, what be it, be it in, in this format or, or a written report. I think that, that probably makes the most sense to try to close the loop on this.
The only piece that I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The only piece that I would just want to be clear on, I guess, is that the boards, again, options are to refer this for investigation, which would essentially keep this hearing process open until some further date when you would be satisfied or not satisfied by some further information. The other option, if you're going to basically place a regulation on the license, requires a determination to be issued to the license holder so that they have, can exercise whatever the rights that they have pursuant to a decision. And it's just important to sort of procedurally differentiate between those, those two things so that we know, and the Board Office knows how to treat the, the license itself.
So ju- just so I'm clear, through you, Mr. Chair, so I'm clear, if we issue the condition, we potentially close this hearing, but the condition is now attached to license, if the condition is not met, then there's a new process to revoke the license?
That's right. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may, that's correct. That you basically be putting a further regulation on the license as the decision of this body. But if instead what you're saying, and I'm not, I'm trying, not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but instead what you're saying is we feel like we need, need more information to figure out how we want to handle this particular petition. That's fine. I just want to be clear that, that, that that's a, a different posture.
If I can just jump in, I think what we're trying, the tenor of the motion is, and I think we're trying to look for, is that we let the investigation go on, ask for a six month investigation, referring to the APD for a six month investigation during that time. The ACO will work with the residents, suggest certain measures that could be taken to reduce the noise complaints and then report back the, the, at the end of the investigation in three to six months, however long that the ACO determines. And then we'll make a final determination on this petition.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I could make a motion to refer for investigation with a preliminary report back at the three month mark and a final report back at six month mark.
With the other conditions that I put on?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Carroll, I apologize. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Carroll, you want to withdraw your motion, second Miss Mahan's motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Mrs. DeCoursey, any additional comments?
No, no, I can agree with that. I saw Captain Flynn raise his hand. I don't know if he wanted to say something in response to that motion. I just want you to be comfortable with what we're doing.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Chair. Yes. And I agree and would suggest that we, you know, we can provide, we'll be able to track calls for service in that neighborhood and any complaints that we receive in regards to the dog. And we'll be prepared to put something together preliminary in three months and in six months have a final report for the board.
And Mr. Diggins?
Yeah. Sorry, hold on. I got there we go. I had still was muted. Yeah, I liked the idea. I do have a question for Captain Flynn through, through you. Are there dogs in the neighborhood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there are other animals in the neighborhood.
Do they?
Animals, inner animals just on the other side of the back fence in McLennan Park.
Do they bark?
The other animals?
Yes.
I would imagine so.
Okay, all right. And my other comment is that I, I, I'm a little concerned about the three months and six months timeframe because, because as mentioned, I mean, we are going to winter. And so I'm afraid we might get like a false positive results. I mean, if we assess in three months, I mean, we'll probably definitely get a false positive. And, or let me rephrase that, misleading, we might be misled into thinking that the situation has been made better. And so I, I would suggest adjusting the timeframe. And generalizing this issue a little bit more, I will just say that if anyone played music like dogs bark, the people would make noise complaints about it. I mean, we played music at that volume and the times of day that we hear even one dog barking, we, there would be complaints issued and people go, you know what? That's not cool. I mean, you're, 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 you're making too much noise. So I think in general, I mean, the whole, the like noise thing has got to be dealt with because it does drive people crazy. And, and by that crazy, I mean, I think it makes them really behave negatively towards their neighbors. And, and small things become big things because people have just been assaulted by the noise for a long time. It's a bigger issue, but this one reason that I feel that we really need to go at the root of really trying to deal with this noise issue for the 25 people that have complained. And maybe for the other people who are not complaining about the people on one dog that's barking at whatever time. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also support the motion. I just note to Captain Flynn, just as a thought, that the investigation would be both what happens to the noise complaint. But as you report back, we'd also be interested to hear if there were any basis to some of the allegations from the residents about, you know, other neighbors, not particularly or works or any other neighbors that are doing anything that exacerbate the situation with his dogs. So just as a point of comment. So with that, turning hand, we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carroll.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone.
All right. That takes us on to traffic rules and order and other business. We have item number five on agenda, request for one space on street overnight parking at 43 Thorndike Street by Mr. Matt O'Connor. And we do have a recommendation here in our file that's been posted from our Parking Control Officer, Officer Rito. Is Mr. O'Connor with us?
He is. I just promoted him to panelists.
Mr. O'Connor, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, board members, for having me.
Name and address, and then just tell us a little bit about your petition.
Sure. My name is Matt O'Connor. I live at 43 Thorndike Street with my wife, Suzie, and my son Franklin. We moved here in July, bought a house in July, came coming back to Arlington. Both my parents are from here. My dad on Peter Tufts Road and my mom on North Union Street, Fred O'Connor, Jean Aiken. So we're super excited to come back. Buying a house during a pandemic is less than ideal. But we were excited coming from Cambridge, from 800 square feet to finally find a single family home, just across 16. It was exciting. The house had a driveway. We have two cars. And we figured, you know, we got to see the house for 15 minute walkthrough and online, and it was pretty much closed in three days. We figured the driveway would certainly accommodate both our cars. My wife and I both work full time. Upon moving in, we quickly realized that it couldn't accommodate two cars. I even tested it by pulling both cars in during a storm and I had to crawl out the tailgate to my forester and call my wife to come open it for me. Because the problem is the driveway isn't wide enough. It abuts the house and it abuts our neighbor's property. We were also unaware of the overnight parking ban. That was something I was completely unaware of. So when I did get one of my first tickets, I was a little surprised and I'm pretty proactive and very big into communication. So I called the town and the police morning of and was led in on how it all works and that Thorndike is a pretty active street due to, due to its proximity to Elway. We, you know, we, as I mentioned, we do need both of our cars for work. We have a son who has a complicated medical history, actually has some surgery tomorrow morning. We do park our car in front of our house. And I will say, I fully understand all that, you know, there are other cars on the street that do that as well. And I know there is a, a ban on overnight parking. And I guess whether it's now or at the end, I'd have to ask, I've read through the website, the town website, and I can't find, and maybe I overlooked it, why there's an overnight parking ban for residents? And what the reason is. When I've gotten my tickets, I've looked out in the morning, there's plenty of cars that I know are residents of my street. And they, the cars are in the same place 24 hours a day. And either they haven't been ticketed either, or they're parked in front of their house. And they, and they have been taken to. There's others that have been ticketed and they're parked in front of their house. So I mean, that's the situation we're going through. We've explored, I've talked to friends and family and they're like, well, why can't you just extend the driveway? Extending the driveway is not an issue. Extending it, the issue is width. And again, it's unfortunate. And I've tested it just because I wanted to be sure. I wanted to, you know, check everything. It's just, it's, you can't get out of the car in the doors. Like if my wife is getting her way back out to get her in. But if we put both cars in, the car at the very end can get in, but the other one is basically landlocked. So having that car on the street currently sort of enables us to be, get to both and do whatever we need to do for work and for our son.
All right, Mr. O'Connor, at this point, I'm going to turn to the board for any questions or comments that they might have. Mr. Coursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. O'Connor. I just, I didn't realize until you said during the introduction, but your mother and my mother and Mrs. Kripalka were all classmates at Arlington High School. So.
That's funny you say that. I, I know your mother, Emery, very well. I haven't seen her in a long time. And my mother didn't inform me because my original email went to Ms. Kripalka. And my mother was like, oh, I went to high school with her. So yes.
Yeah.
That is correct.
And I wish your son the best of luck in his, in his surgery tomorrow. And, 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 you know, this is, I've only been on the board for a year and a half. I've had one other of these hearings. These are very different hearings because unfortunately we have very strict standards for, for the hardship for, for off-street parking. And you raise a good question as to, you know, whether we continue with the overnight parking ban or not. And then from time to time, we talk about looking, looking into that. Unfortunately, I'll wait for the other members of the board. I, I've been by your house. I, I do see the problem that you have with the, the width of the driveway as you, as you go. If you were to go deeper, if the driveway extended, the house extends. So you, you can't park a car there. My other colleagues who've been on the board longer, I think will point out that where there is a parking spot on a property, usually there's not a hardship waiver given, but I want to let them, give them the opportunity to speak. And I think it's unfortunate where there's only one car that can fit in. But it, it's our standards that we've applied in the past to make it very difficult for us to grant the waiver. But I want to hear what the others have to say before we take a final vote.
And Mr. Diggins?
Well, I haven't been on the board very long, but I've watched a lot of these meetings. And I know how these requests go. And especially when the, the reporting officer, I mean, does not approve it, is this in the case here? You know, the, the reason these bans exist is because we have had at least a couple of town-wide referendum ballots being, and this passed overwhelmingly that people do not want on-street parking. And in the east, I mean, it's pretty dense. I mean, and I'm thinking that if we did allow for it, what would we do with the demand, I mean, for that on-street parking? Very soon we'd have, you know, shortage of it and we'd have to regulate it in some way. You know, it, it, I guess my question is, and to my colleagues too, is that, I mean, at what level of health, I mean, or concern about someone's health, I mean, does it warrant an exempt, an exemption? And I'll make the situation even a little tougher on us. It's like normally, I mean, as you know, I'm a transit guy. But given the pandemic, we, we realized that people were not doing transit as much, I mean, for a variety of reasons. I mean, so we can see people, I mean, maybe gravitating towards their cars more. I mean, one of the solutions, which is probably not applicable in your situation right now, is smaller cars. It, I see these little smart cars that can fit in the, in a bike lane essentially. I mean, if you had a couple of those, you could probably fit them in your place. I mean, that might be a longer term solution. But, but I mean, I'm not going to close the door now because I want to hear what other people say. Because, you know, I would like to get to yes, but get to yes in a way that is, is consistent. I mean, that it can apply to someone other than you and it can apply townwide and in a way that makes sense. I mean, and, you know, that's it. I'll stop.
Mrs. Mahan?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand the petitioner and his mom or parents lived here before, which anyone who's lived in Arlington any certain amount of time knows that there is no parking overnight on a residential streets. And that's something that's been put forth at town meeting and the voters at least three times in the past 20 years. And it just hasn't gone through. So with that, and I understand family circumstances, I certainly have, all my colleagues know on the board, my personal circumstances, which don't play into anything, but that I would make a motion from the recommendation from our traffic and parking unit that we move no action on granting a waiver in front of 43 Thorndike Street, but that we do recommend that either the Hattie School or any other municipal parking lot nearby, that the petitioner look into that for some relief.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I'll second the motion and just say that these are always difficult. I think you asked a great question. Why do we have the overnight parking ban? And I think if you ask folks, you'll get a lot of different, it's been around for so long, you'll get a lot of different responses. I mean, there's some thinking that, that it increases public safety by, by removing visible barriers to properties at night. Some thinking that it was put in place originally to keep down traffic or, or density of households. I've asked this question many times. I think a lot of us have gotten different, different answers through the years, but you know, what Ms. Mahan and, and others have said is, is right. I think that shortly after I got on the board, eight and a half years ago, we, we had a thought that we would we had a thought that we would go to the voters again because we thought maybe we would be able to do some experimentation with the overnight overnight parking. Every single precinct voted to uphold, voted to uphold the overnight parking ban. So we've been very hesitant to you know, break with the will of the voters in that. And it's actually, it's not really good public policy for us to be offering, you know, one-off exceptions. I think we'd rather be able to do that in a more comprehensive way. And we do some of that with for, you know, a driver with a handicap placard or whatnot, we have made some exceptions there. But so I've seconded Mahan's motion. I'm sorry. I know that it's a, it's a big inconvenience, but it's, it's it's where we are. Thank you.
I would just add that we had, probably a year, two year and a half ago, we had a number of discussions around the overnight parking ban and some creative solutions that have been put forth. And since the pandemic, we kind of sidelined those discussions and I anticipate in the coming years, we will resume those discussions. But as of right now, we do have the parking ban and what we discussed about a year ago is putting in sort of a checklist system every time we get a request from someone for an overnight parking permit. And the first item on the parking permit is, do you have parking? Not, do you have two, three spots? Does the unit have parking? And if you check that box, then we go no further. And we generally, in those situations, don't, that's not an exigent situation where we, we grant these situations. You know, I think the one shining light that you have is it's inconvenient, but I had a house with no parking when I first lived in Arlington and we parked over at the Pierce School. It's a little bit of a walk, but you do have a few options nearby that can, you know, in certain circumstances, you can get overnight parking in the municipal lots that will alleviate the situation for you. It won't grant you the relief that you guys are looking for. But like I said, you know, the first question we ask in these situations is, is there parking at the property? And for you, there is one spot available. So thank you, Mr. O'Connor. I'm going to ask, does the board, does the board have any further questions for Mr. O'Connor? All right, we're going to discuss it and take a vote. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Corsi, any further discussion on this?
No further discussion.
Mr. Diggins, any further discussion?
No, no, it's just, yeah, no, not now.
Mrs. Mahan?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carl?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Attorney Heim, we have a record and voted no action by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carl.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
All right, that takes us to our next item, number six hundred, agenda discussion and approval, CDBG, CV three program activities recommended by the CDBG Subcommittee. Mr. Chaplin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heard. So last week, the CDBG Subcommittee met. Arlington Fortunate as an entitlement community has received an additional three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars in supplemental CDBG monies to help provide relief in these times that we're facing. So the committee reviewed recommendations that were made by staff from the Planning and Community Development Department, gave some feedback and those recommendations were slightly tweaked and brought before the board tonight. We had initially envisioned meeting again with the CDBG Subcommittee before coming to the board. But what we learned through that Subcommittee meeting was the faster we can ask for approval from this board, the faster we can start the process with the federal government, with HUD, to then be able to put these dollars into the hands of the people that we want to get them to, based on their demonstrated need. So from these three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we're recommending that we put two hundred thousand towards a further business assistance program and one hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars towards public services. The business assistance program, as is laid out in the memo, envisions potentially giving grants up to twenty businesses or two twenty businesses in the amounts of ten thousand dollars. But we ask that the board also accept there being some flexibility in making grant amounts higher or lower than that ten thousand dollar threshold. We want to make sure through feedback from the business community that we're giving grants that can truly keep businesses afloat as we want the program to be as successful as possible. In terms of public services, these dollars we're asking be equally split between the school department and Health and Human Services. So we're asking that just approximately sixty thousand dollars go to the schools to provide for tutoring services to students that are demonstrating challenges with remote and online learning. And that sixty thousand dollars go to Health and Human Services for the creation of an onsite testing center at Monotomy Manor for tenants for testing for COVID- nineteen. So we're asking for favorable action from the board tonight, which will then start a five-day public comment period and then lead to the rest of the process with HUD, again, hoping to make these dollars available before the end of the calendar year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has, but we're looking for a vote of approval tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you would like to make your remarks before mine because I don't want to take everything away before you do, or how do you want to handle it? Everything that Mr. Chaplain said, there was discussion about basically the CDBG Subcommittee, Mr. Heard and I and the rest of the members would like a vote tonight so that these monies would be available in December. Anything later than that would push the process to January. I would inform people that I know when people hear CDBG, they want to get projects and this is two, two very limited areas that these monies can go to. But we will be starting in December, opening the quote-unquote regular CDBG application process for what we normally do every year. And we also anticipate under the CDBG CARES Act, CV three, et cetera, that there might be two other allocations under this. So I would just echo everything that the town manager said as well as there were two businesses that initially applied to the CDBG CARES Act that were not allowed, did not fit the criteria. I would encourage them and anyone else to apply for this. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the CDBG CV three program activities recommended by our CDBG Subcommittee.
I just added, we're all in unanimous agreement as to the recommendations with the Subcommittee. And I do want to give credit where credit is due because as the meeting was going, like many town meetings, we were going to table it to the next meeting, get a final recommendation, make a vote for, at another CDBG Subcommittee meeting. But I want to give credit to Mrs. Mahan, who stepped up and said, hey, you know, this is for businesses that really need the money right now. And as that, we took the we took the recommendations from the planning department, made some slight modifications and got this on this agenda, which, which was quick, but really needed. So I did want to give Mrs. Mahan credit for that.
And if I could jump in on that, our chair does serve on the Planning and Community Development Economic Task Force. I'm not going to say that misnomer right, but that's part of the reason that kind of spurred me on because you have been very active on that committee and I've kept myself and the rest of my colleagues abreast in terms of economic development and trying to keep our businesses vital. So back at you, my friend, and thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Curro, Mr. Diggins and I will have to work on something else together, but I appreciate the work that you're that you both did. And I think it makes good sense. I'm glad that this is on the agenda tonight because we, you know, the sooner we can get the money out, the better off and the more help that we can give businesses and individuals. So thank you. And I guess that was your motion, Dan. I'll second the motion.
You, Mr. Carl?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work on this as well. My only question is, is there, are there any criteria that you anticipate beyond the number of employees? For example, I'm thinking of the PPP loan grant program was specifically directed towards maintaining payroll or meeting utilities or whatnot. Do you anticipate criteria like that? Or is it strictly, you know, Arlington-based businesses that have a maximum of twenty FTEs?
Chaplain answer, but I think it's just the number of employees is set by HUD, but it's just a general grant. But, Mr. Chaplain?
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Chair. In general terms, Mr. Heard is correct. There's a series of eligible costs that go beyond payroll, but not all costs. And planning staff will work with each grant applicant to make sure that what they spend the money on is eligible under HUD.
Oh, so there is an accounting feedback. So great. Thank you very much for your work on this. I'm happy to support the motion.
Mrs. Diggins?
Yes, well, I actually attended the last Arlington Economic Recovery Task Force meeting. And so I got to see a bit of this coming. And I have a, I mean, I do support it, you know, a lot. I have a couple of questions. One about the money to businesses. Will they be able to use this money to to get things before? I think one of the other programs, I mean, they had to like, for instance, buy inventory and then get reimbursed for it. And so for some of those businesses, that was, that was difficult because they didn't have the money to buy the inventory. So is that a situation like, is a situation similar for this grant?
Mr. Chair, may I respond? I believe all of these CDBG programs are reimbursement-based. So I do believe that the expense has to be expended and demonstrated before reimbursement can be received. I'm ninety-eight percent sure of that, Mr. Diggins. I could confirm the planning staff, but I'm fairly certain it is reimbursement-based.
Okay. And the reason I ask that though is because when there was discussion about it, and it could be that I'm getting programs confused. I mean, there was one, the question was, do we come up with something that will help a few businesses a lot? I mean, or whether we come up with something that will help a lot of businesses a little. And that's, even that's the way it was said. I think the thought was, let's say we wanted to help businesses, we come up with some better way to use technology, websites, for instance. Then do we come up, hire someone that helps a whole bunch of businesses with their websites or with their technology? So that's the reason I thought it might have been a little different than a reimbursement program. Well, as I said, I think the reimbursement programs are kind of problematic, but I'm still going to support this, but just put that out there. And I certainly like what's going on with the plan for school, especially hiring a tutor. I really like what's about the plan for the other aspects of it where you help people with food and other humanitarian needs. So so I'm glad we got the money. I'm glad we're pushing forward sooner rather than later. So total support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Attorney Heim, we have a motion for approval by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. De Corsi.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. And that takes us on to, so item number seven, as I mentioned before, this was, I believe, so beyond for a more motion for receipt, which
So moved.
We have a motion to receive correspondence.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Corsi, any questions? Mr. Diggins?
I'll save it for later. Thank you.
All right, Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, that brings us to number eight on our agenda, discussion and approval reinstatement of parking meters on November first. Mr. Chaplain?
Thank you, Mr. Heard. So tonight, I wanted to ask the board, we've been talking about this all through the summer. I feel like almost every month, we've thought about coming back and asking to turn the meters on. But one major thing we wanted to do was get pay by phone up and running before we came back and also have there be more demonstrated business occurring or commerce occurring in the center before we turn the meters on with traffic picking up. And with the good news that I know Mr. Curro will very much appreciate with pay by phone ready to be implemented at the start of November, we do want to ask the board tonight to turn the meters back on or to begin enforcing the meters again at the start of November on both the street as well as in the Russell Common Lot and the railroad lot. On the agenda, I asked for the board to consider initiating this on November first. It was very wisely pointed out to me that waiting to turn them back on until after election day would make a lot of sense. And also in the same motion or same request to request suspending metering in the lots, the Russell Common Lot and the railroad lot the last Saturday in November and the first three Saturdays in December, which is the norm, the normal request made by the Chamber of Commerce to support business through the holiday season. So if the board would entertain it, I would ask for the board to support turning the meters back on and enforcement back on on November fourth and suspending metering in the lots, again, the Russell Common Lot and the railroad lot, the last Saturday in November and the first three Saturdays in December. Thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Can I say so moved on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carl?
Second. Thank you.
All set. Thank you.
And Mr. Corsi?
No comments. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just say, I support this too. And, you know, one of the other items that's happened in the center that I think was a good benchmark here is that we're just about wrapping up the sidewalk replacements, which look great. I don't think it needs to be part of the metering. I don't know if it would be worthwhile having some sort of one-off ticket reversal if people didn't know when they first got turned on, they get the first ticket reversed, but I don't think that we need to be part of the motion at this time, but just a thought. As the meters have been off for a while, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of people complaining when they get the first ticket, thinking, not knowing that. Not everybody watches our meetings. I know we have the millions and millions of people at home, as Mr. Greeley used to say, but we can discuss that further. All right, Attorney Heim, we have a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Curro.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, and that takes us to under number eight, discussion and approval, I'm sorry, item number nine, discussion and vote, extension of the local state of emergency. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Heard. I'll keep this brief. The state of emergency, both on a state level and from a Board of Health perspective, continues. I put a draft extension of your prior declarations of emergency, both the original declaration and then your continuation of it because your declaration expired in October, October of this year. So this declaration would essentially extend the board's declaration, which as the board may recall, is for the primary purposes of making it clear that, you know, there's a state of emergency in town. There are certain measures that we're taking such as closing town hall, requiring certain things of town employees, requiring such as closing Town Hall, requiring certain things of town employees, requiring certain measures by the town, but also for the purposes of reimbursement for state and federal aid during a state of emergency. It's a helpful local declaration to have made. So, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's more or less the same thing with blank for a new proposed date to extend the state of emergency within the body of the language and some updated, you know, numbers on infections, both locally and statewide.
All right, now I'll turn to the board for questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval for an extension of the local state of emergency as outlined by Attorney Hime.
Right, and do we have to add a date, Attorney Hime?
I'm sorry, what's that, Mr. Chair?
Do we have to add a date?
Yeah, I would, I just want a date for when we'll revisit this.
And your recommendation is?
You know, the last time the board went from June to October, I think, you know, basically a similar period of time, if it makes sense.
So, April? Is that what you're saying till April?
I think it would be helpful, it's a good point, Mrs. Mahan, it'd be helpful for the purposes leading up to town meeting.
If I could, Mr. Chair, if I could make a motion to extend the local state of emergency until April of 2021.
All right, Mr. Curro?
I'll second it. I was actually going to suggest that we, you know, this is kind of, kind of like the the moving of the 11 o'clock rule, which we're, I fear we may be flirting with again tonight. And I was tempted to suggest that we actually say it will remain in effect until the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State of Emergency is lifted. We have other language in there with a town manager, or we could lift it earlier. But I'm happy to second your motion unless you would like to change it, Mrs. Mahan.
I will be guided by my colleague, Mr. Curro, and Attorney Hime, whether it's until April 2021 or in accordance with Mr. Curro's language. So, Attorney Hime, if you could comment what would work best?
I certainly think, yeah, so in the past, the board's discussion has been oriented towards, well, we don't want to extend this for longer than a date certain, but it's gone on for so long at this point in time that I don't think that there's any, I don't perceive any legal downside to having it sync up with the Commonwealth if you don't want to keep on having to come back and renew it and renew it and renew it. As Mr. Curro said, you could certainly basically declare it over before the Commonwealth if you wanted to put it on the agenda and affirmatively do so. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I certainly think administratively it would be easier to sync it up with the Commonwealth's declaration if the board's inclined to do so.
Okay, if it's okay with Attorney Hime and my colleague, Mr. Curro, and others, that we both the extension of the local state of emergency concurrent with the state's declaration efforts that there too, or any better language than that.
Mr. Curro, then works for you a second. Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, that's fine. No further comment.
Mrs. Diggins?
I'm going to go with it, but I just do want to point out that I would like to revisit this notion at the end of February because if it does look like we are going to be under state of emergency through April, that will help guide us in determining what kind of town meeting we're going to have because it's much easier to push for another virtual town meeting with a state of emergency. So, I'll just say, you know, let's keep that in the back of our minds and maybe at the end of February, we come back and think about what things are looking like. But I'm going to support this motion as is.
Yeah, I support this too. I think we might have been wishful thinking when we said it for October that maybe we'd have some movement, but that's not the case, and who knows when that's going to come. So, I think as the plan is to keep it in place to be concurrent with the state of emergency in the Commonwealth. So, I think the language works.
So, Attorney Hime, we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Curro.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right, and that brings us to number 10. This is a discussion that is continuing from 12:30 AM at our last meeting. So, it's discussion of vote marijuana establishment, host community agreement, licensed applicants. One was Calix Peak of Massachusetts, Inc., to Hampshire Street, Suite 100B, Foxborough, Massachusetts, by Edward Schmaltz. Second one was the Human Connection LLC, 29 Florence Avenue, Arlington, Mass., by Jared Glansberger. So, at the time, we had heard from both applicants, and we moved on to our discussion and vote portion. So, I'll open it up to the board. It wasn't my plan to bring back the applicants since we had already heard their presentations and had the question-answer portions completed unless any board members have an inclination to do so. So, I will start with Mr. Diggins.
Well, I had made my statement the last time. It's pretty much the same, you know, I'll repeat it, but a little more briefly. I very much like the Human Connection. I like the fact that it is in East Arlington. It's in Precinct 3, right across from Precinct 4. And the other one, other license is now in Precinct 1, right across from Precinct 3. And those two precincts, 3 and 4, have voted 2 to 1 for recreational marijuana, which I know that there are potential difficulties, I mean, with respect to traffic. But I think if any two precincts should be willing to undertake that, it would be those two. I also like the notion that they are close to Cambridge and Somerville. And even though I'm not a vengeful person, yeah, I will take retribution when it falls into my lap. And so I think it'd be kind of nice for Arlington to have recreational marijuana right across the line from Cambridge because they had, you know, liquor shops or right across the line from Arlington for a while when Arlington was dry. So, it's an opportunity for us to grab some, some income from Cambridge. And also, I think the location for the Human Connection is far superior to Calix's. I mean, and the only issue that I think we need to surmount is the 2,000-foot separation between it and the other shop in East Arlington. So, I'll stop there because my position hasn't really changed. Thank you.
All right, Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it just took some comments, and I thought both presentations were very good last week and appreciated to both applicants staying on so late and providing good presence.
Lost your sound, Steve?
Application because the buffer is just, that property, looking property line to property line is 1,685 feet. There's no ability under the zoning bylaw to waive that 2,000-foot distance. And I will point out, a year ago, when Calix Peak applied at what was the Nicola Pizza site in Arlington Heights, they were about 1,970 feet from Apothca. And if you went door to door, which is what the Human Connection suggested last week, if you went door to door from Buzzy's Bazaar to the location on Broadway, that may be over 2,000 feet. Apothca's front door to the corner door, what used to be the entrance to Nicola Pizza's, over 2,000 square, 2,000 linear feet. So, we've applied a standard in the past of property line to property line. Seems unfair to me to now change that standard, particularly where there's an applicant who, it was applied, I think, properly a year ago, but they unfortunately were 30 feet or less. And what was a good location and what was a otherwise a good location and a good presentation based on the thought of the board members afterwards. I understand the issues with Calix Peak, but at the end of the presentations last year, Mr. Dunn and Mr. Curro spoke specifically about the Calix Peak application. And I believe it was Mr. Dunn, the time encouraged them to look for another site in Arlington. They have found another site. The site complies with all the buffer zones and zoning. And I realize there are challenges with the neighborhood that I think are going to have to be addressed to the environmental design review process with the ARB. But at least, as before, I asked for a host community agreement. I only see one qualified application. So, I'm going to support the Calix Peak application for that reason.
Then a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the Calix Peak application.
All right, Mrs. Mahan?
Um, I agree with my colleague, Mrs. De Corsi, regarding the Human Connection, the 2,000-foot buffer zone, as well as one of the tenants that we have. In terms of approving these, that there's site control and there was no determinant, exact site identification of where it would appear. The buzzy site was put out as a possibility, but it wasn't, I'm clad in that. So, because of those two reasons, the 2,000-foot buffer and not having site control, I agree with my colleague, Mr. De Corsi, in terms of the Human Connection doesn't rise to that. In terms of Calix Peak, I'm happy to, I second Mr. De Corsi's motion for discussion. I don't know if you all can hear me, it's saying my connection is unstable. But I would put out, okay, am I back now?
You are.
Okay, sorry, I saw my cable was unstable, so I tried to slow down. I'll definitely second Mr. De Corsi's motion for discussion, but I would say, and if Attorney Hime can either correct me or agree with me in terms of, just because we have one more HCA to give out, we don't necessarily have to do that. And I'd be interested in hearing from my other colleagues. So, I would ask Attorney Hime, is that correct, what I just said?
Mr. Chair, may I? Yes, Miss Mahan, that's correct. We have, there's not a cap on the number of HCAs. There's a cap on the total number of special permits or licenses that can be granted for retail marijuana establishments. So, there's already two HCAs for retail marijuana in Arlington existing to date. And one of them is in the license application process before the Arlington redevelopment board. The other one already has their special permit and is open. So, what, in theory, there's not a cap on the HCAs, but if you have, but I would say that realistically speaking, there's only room for one more HCA or you'd be giving out more HCAs than there are licenses from the ARB. You don't have to give an HCA to anybody. The sort of general guidepost is that we shouldn't be artificially suppressing the number of licenses available. If you don't think an applicant or a site is attractive or appropriate, you don't have to give one. So, it's ultimately within the board's discretion.
Okay, so I definitely second Mr. De Corsi's motion for discussion. And right now, I'm leaning towards no, but I'd like to hear from my remaining colleagues. And thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mrs. De Corsi.
Mr. Curro?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, I'll tell you that I greatly respect the retail experience of Calix Peak. I felt like for the town of Arlington, the proposal was put together by the Human Connection, what was a superior proposal. I thought that they spoke to a lot of the local issues and having local ownership, which is a priority for us. And if that were as far as it went, I would be supporting or putting forward a motion to support a host community agreement with the Human Connection. But the zoning issue is just a, it's a, it's a roadblock, I think, to doing so. I don't feel comfortable with the Calix Peak location. It does, strictly speaking, it meets the requirements of the application, but on qualitative grounds. I think a lot of us know that intersection. It worked okay as a gas station with some difficulties. It's gotten even, it actually has a more complicated configuration now, since some of the housing went in. School routes, it's close by areas of youth congregation and all that goes with that, Hills Hill and North Brown Park. And I recognize that according to zoning, that that's not a, no startup. But qualitatively, for me, it's an issue for me. As far as I'm concerned, we had a proposal that was, to my mind, superior for the needs of the town of Arlington, met one of the priority categories, isn't meeting the zoning categories, but also has stated a desire to continue looking for a site that would fit. So, I don't see any harm in holding off on granting of a third HCA at this point. You know, I knew our first dispensary just opened less than a month ago, and the second one is not even quite approved yet. So, I am not inclined at this time to support either of the two applications. Thank you.
All right, and so I also was very impressed by the Human Connections' presentation, as well as, you know, I love the idea of having a locally-owned shop. But I think with these applications, really, the location is an integral part of the application. So, to say, you know, we'd like the agreement, but we're going to work with the town to find a new location, I just, I don't think that's grounds to grant the HCA to Human Connection based on that. And I think, you know, there's been some discussion back and forth, but, you know, it's pretty clear that the site that they're looking at right now just is not a viable site within the zoning bylaws. I spoke to another business owner in that site who wasn't even aware that there was any, you know, potential for a marijuana shop to go into that complex. So, I don't know the viability of working that complex to find a suitable location. And so with that, I don't think that that's, I don't think we could approve an HCA for the Human Connection. I do, you know, I, Mr. Curro's got more experience with this locate, the location on Summer Street than me, but I think it's a workable location. Like I said before, you know, we've, when we first looked at the applications way back when, for the original HCAs, we were anticipating these swaths of people coming in in large lines, large traffic queuing. And I've seen the Apothca's, I've observed Apothca a number of times, and I haven't seen any sort of queuing like that. So, I think it's more of a steady flow of people. So, I'm inclined to support the Calix Peak application for that site. And I would just say, you know, I think these applicants have known for a while that we're going to eventually put this HCA back out for bid. And we are very limited with the way that the bylaws are written. We're very limited as to the locations where we can put one of these shops. And I think if an alternate suitable location existed, then one of the applicants would have located it. So, I don't know if it's, we have a good applicant here in Calix Peak, who was very impressive in both presentations that we both, when the originally presented to us and the presentation that they made to us at the last meeting, that I think, you know, again, it's not, they don't have some of the draws that the Human Connection had for us for a locally-owned shop. But, you know, I do think it's a good, it was a good presentation, and I think they'll do well in the location that they propose. Do we have any further discussion or comments? So, Attorney Hime, we have a motion from Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, to approve the HCA agreement for Calix Peak.
Mrs. Mahan?
No.
Mr. Decoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
No.
Mr. Uh, Kuro?
No.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's a two, three vote, the motion does not carry.
Do we have any alternate motions? All right, with that, this will close this agenda item. All right, we are now at nine forty-seven and about to start the warrant article hearing portion of this, so. Are we?
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, can we take a?
Ten minute break by show of of nods.
How long, Mr. Chair? Ten minutes, okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we should take it by real call, I apologize, I. I know it's silly.
A ten minute break, oh.
If if there's a motion, unless you're just declaring it as the chair.
So I was gonna declare, and I think that's what we said last. So it'll be consistent.
Alright, thank you, sir.
People can be mad at me if they. All right, so we'll take a ten minute break, it's now nine forty-eight, we'll come back at ten o'clock. All right, so that takes us to item number eleven on our agenda. Warrant article hearings and votes. So as many people know, that this is a unique set of warrant article hearings. A number of these warrant articles were proposed for our spring, annual spring uh, town meeting for twenty twenty, and due to a global pandemic, we pushed these off for the safety of our town meeting members, only handled um, the financial articles that we needed to keep our town running in the spring, telling me that happened in June. So there's been a little bit of confusion, both online and with some of the correspondence that we've received, I know we've all received regarding the hearing process. So we do have, we have five articles that were either, are either new articles or have been substantially changed since they were originally proposed to us for the spring town meeting. Those five articles will have new warrant article hearings. I'll let Attorney Heim get a little more in depth here, but the remaining articles we have on for final votes and comments, all articles that should be Article three, four, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. We had warrant article hearings for all of those articles back in January, February into March of last year. We did have public input on all those articles, and all those articles are the same as they were, or substantially the same as they were proposed at that time. And they're just being resubmitted as they were pushed off due to the pandemic in the spring. So I just do want to address some miscommunications and misinformation that's been put out there, some of which was, is by residents who were participated in those those hearings back in uh, January and February, that all of these articles have had public input, they've all had public hearings. And just now we're taking them up for final votes and comments to put them forth to the, for the special town meeting, and as Mr. Diggins was present, but not voting in the during those hearings. So Attorney Heim, if if you have anything to add to the introduction, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Heard, um, I'll I'll try not to go over the same territory, but again, as a reminder for members of the board and the public, the focus of the special town meeting on November sixteenth is to take up business, which was essentially tabled during the truncated twenty twenty annual town meeting due to COVID nineteen pandemic. So in that vein, the board has two sets of warrant article actions that should probably have been broken out into two separate agenda items. In the first bucket, you have warrant article hearings on Articles five, six, eight, ten, and twenty-five. My understanding is that at least two of those items are likely to be tabled at the request of the proponents until the next meeting. But these items were slated for hearings because uh, they were either articles which weren't on the twenty twenty annual town meeting warrant, Article ten and Article twenty-five, they weren't previously voted upon by the board prior to the annual town meeting, or they were voted upon positively and negatively, but the proponents of those articles requested changes to the substance of the warrant articles, which materially affects the board's prior posture. Each of those items is discussed individually for the purposes of a board vote and development of a record for the comments. The second bucket, Articles three, four, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. You have your final votes, draft final votes and comments, and these are matters on which the board both held hearings and voted on a recommendation to town meeting. And the purpose of discussing the articles now is to ensure that the draft votes and comments reflect the board's vote and intentions in terms of their recommendations to town meeting. Final votes and comments are taken up by the board collectively, with the board members noting instances where there's specific edits to votes or comments that they'd like to be changed or elaborated upon. If the board and the public are willing to indulge me for a moment, I'd like to make a special note in Article fifteen, because I've heard from both board members and members of the public on the draft vote and comment before you. The vote as drafted in the board's materials has two ingredients that are meant to uh, prevent inappropriate candidates from being appointed as these retired detail officers, and I think we all understand uh, some, you know, serious concerns that some folks have about this in our current sort of uh, context. The first is that the language of the special acts make it very clear that appointment is purely discretionary, and it requires the recommendation of the police chief. And that means that an appointment can be denied for any non discriminatory reason, and neither candidates nor appointees have civil service or collectively bargained rights to the appointment or to maintain the appointment. Indeed, the manager uh, can essentially terminate anybody from detail work with or without cause. This is the most important ingredient, because this is what we're oftentimes sort of circling around when it comes to employee discipline and the nature of collectively bargained rights. Second, uh, based on the comments from both the public and the board, officers aren't eligible if they were involuntary separated, involuntarily separated from employment or have any active administrative or disciplinary matters open against them upon voluntary separation. So the idea there is that someone who was terminated can't be then hired back as a retired officer for detail, or similarly, someone can't quit voluntarily for the purpose of trying to avoid some sort of disciplinary matter. That might be a stand on the record. To allay any further anxiety without creating an unworkable standard, so that if somebody was disciplined for insubordination or being late and therefore isn't eligible to be uh, serve on a detail in retirement. I have drafted some language that I think addresses uh, the public's concerns if the board would like to add a third ingredient. And the proposed language that uh, I would add is, in addition to language about um, outstanding administrative discipline or disciplinary charges levied against them at the time of retirement, that they would not be eligible um, if they had been subject to quote duty restrictions or assignment modifications as a result of a disciplinary action for misconduct within the last however many years, five to ten years prior to their retirement. So what that meant, what that means to capture is that if there's a discipline that's meted out that results in a modification of what someone's assignment is or their duty, such that they can't be occupying some role in the police department because of a disciplinary matter taken against them, that's significant enough to trigger that this isn't somebody that we want um, to be working on a detail. So uh, in retirement. So I hope that that allays uh, some folks' concerns if the board's inclined to add that, and I'm only bringing that up now because I understand that folks are very concerned about this, but we've got a lot of warrant article hearings that we would in, that we're gonna individually take up, and then final votes and comments, which, as I said, are taken up by the board en masse and sort of discussed among the board, not not as public hearing. So Mr. Heard, unless there's any questions from the board, um, I hope that summary is helpful both to you and to the public.
Does, thank you, and I guess this is just a new chair question for you. Since it's not posted separately, can I take, can we vote on the final votes and comments section before we take on the warrant article hearings? Do we have?
You can take up business in whatever order you like, Mr. Heard. So if you want to take on final votes and comments before you take on the warrant article hearings, you may do so.
Yep, I I think logistically, that is probably the easiest way to do this. So in, as in years past, what I'll do is, I'm just gonna, we have a separate group of articles here for final votes and comments with Attorney Heim's comments on it, our previous um, in our previous votes, so I I just want to go through each article, I'll name them off, and take it to the board for a raise of hands, if anyone has any questions, comments, revisions that they want to make to that particular article. So the first one that we have here is Article three, Bylaw Amendment Regulation of Outdoor Lighting, Uplighting. Are there any additional comments or revisions regarding that that one? All right, Article four, Bylaw Amendment, Minuteman Bike Way Hours. Do we have any additional comments, revisions for that one? And of course, Mr. Diggins, if you have any questions or comments, just let me know. Right. Article seven. Vote Bylaw Amendment Envision Arlington Updated Language. Any questions, revisions, comments? Article nine, Vote Election Modernization Committee. Any revisions to that article? Article eleven, Home Rule Legislation, Justin Rom. My only comment to this one is, once I, when I went back through these for final voting comments, I I felt bad, I feel like that's one that we should have pulled out for Mr. Brown to vote in the June town meeting, but glad we're taking it up here. Article twelve.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question on Article eleven, and and when we had discussed that back in the spring, there was a period of time that we were gonna put into the um, into the um, recommended vote, and I still see that that time is there, but have we added time to account for the additional six months, or is it's the same timetable? Because I I just want to give him the opportunity to get on a list and and take an exam.
Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Decoursey, that's a very good point, um, I can add six months to the December thirty-first, twenty twenty deadline.
Okay, great, thank you.
And and Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We we have a notation there in the um, final votes and comments saying Mr. Brown is thirty-eight years old, is that still accurate? He may be thirty-nine at this point, I'm just saying, we should make sure we update it.
I will check with Mr. Brown.
Very good.
I'm sure we have the answer, all right. So with those revisions, we'll move on to Article twelve. Home Rule Legislation Consolidation of Town Meeting Member Elections. Any comments or revisions? Right. Article thirteen, Home Rule Legislation Rank Choice Voting. Mr. Diggins?
Do you all have it in you to um, rehear that? Look, I mean, I know it's four zero, and I support it, you know, and so the vote's not gonna change, you know. It uh, I went back and I looked at the material that was presented, uh, and and I just want more substance, you know, I'd like to challenge both sides to more substance. That said, I mean, I know chances are we're gonna have, only have one more meeting, and we may have a number of hearings on that one, and I don't want us to have a a long night, you know, so if folks are like, no, I'm like, not a good idea, we know. That's okay, I can probably have this comment, these conversations that I'd like to have um, with both sides, you know, um, on my own. So it's not my only opportunity, but I just put it out there as a friendly.
I'll put it to the board for comment, my leaning towards not having here, because I think we, you know, we had ones out there that had our hearing, um.
Sure.
But.
That's fine.
And I think, you know, most, we're all, with with the vote at four zero.
Sure.
But uh, Ms. Caro, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I I think we should be consistent in our in our practice here, and we did have the hearing. I I do anticipate, just from some of what we've seen, that there'll probably be a lot of debate on this at at town meeting. But one thing I will, I will also just throw into the mix here, though, is that um, as your newly appointed liaison to the Election Modernization Committee, the the committee did did discuss whether or not they wanted to bring back their articles in in this um, special time meeting, I wanted to wait until the annual, and and part of the logic in in bringing this forward at this time was that it's the statewide ballot um, question as well, and so that people will have been exposed to a lot of education around rank choice voting in in the run-up to town meeting, so I I just wanted to throw that in there. But I I I think my inclinations, we should be consistent with um, with the standard we set for what we're hearing, what we're not hearing, so.
Mr. Decoursey?
Yeah, I know, I I agree with Mr. Caro, and and I think, you know, this was an instance where Mr. Diggins wanted to move reconsideration, because he had a different position, I think that's a different story outside the outside the hearing process, but in in terms of hearings, for consistency, I agree with Mr. Caro.
Ms. DeNod?
I agree, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
With that, thanks, thanks for.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Yeah.
All right, and so we have Article fourteen. Home Rule Legislation Senior Water Discount. Any questions, comments, revisions? All right. And that takes us to Article fifteen, Home Rule Legislation Retired Police Officer Details. Is there anyone that would like to offer a revision to the language? Mr. Caro?
Yeah, thank you, well, first, I want to just thank the uh, town council for putting in the good standing standard into the qualifications, I mean, it's it. You know, in addition to the the health standards and and other uh, qual- minimal qualifications that are in there. But the town council did just give us at the, in his opening remarks, some additional language that could potentially allay some of the concerns in the community. And uh, I I I think it would be helpful to put that um, formulation in here, um, if possible, and um, whether it's five years or ten years, I mean, I'm 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 fine with discussing that, but um, if town council through you could repeat the formulation that he had?
Yes, Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Caro. So in addition to um, the good standing requirement signifying that an officer has not been involuntaries, involuntarily separated from employment or had outstanding administrative discipline or disciplinary charges levied against them at the time of retirement, they would not be eligible if they have been subject to duty restrictions or assignment modifications as a result of a disciplinary action for misconduct within the last whatever period the board thinks is appropriate prior to their retirement.
So I would like to move that as an amendment to our recommended vote, um, and I'll I'll move it at ten years, and and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kumi, I'll I'll second it for discussion, I I'm still absorbing it, so I I I don't have any comments right now.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, should I break it down a little bit slower, I'm sorry, I'm speaking fairly quickly on it.
Sure.
So the, it's sort of a three-piece thing here, that they can have been subject to duty restrictions or assignment modifications as a result of disciplinary action for misconduct within the last five, ten years prior to the retirement. So the key pieces are, no, they can't have been subject to duty restrictions or assignment modifications as a result of a disciplinary action from misconduct, and just to anticipate some questions, there might be somebody who's injured in the line of duty that has a duty restriction. there might be somebody who's injured in the line of duty that has a duty restriction. There might be someone who has an assignment modification for, you know, as an accommodation or something like that, but it's duty restrictions or assignment modifications as a result of disciplinary action from misconduct within the last however many years prior to their retirement. And the idea there is that if we just have a very broad language that says discipline, that will capture a lot of things that probably aren't at the center of a lot of our community conversations, you know, things happen on the job, people insubordination, stuff like that. Similarly, if we try to list every single thing like, you know, excessive force or a false arrest or discourtesy, there might be something that's not captured within a list. So this is meant to reflect that if somebody's misconduct has resulted in a modification of what they're basically allowed to do as as an officer, then that's would prohibit them from, again, this is only relative to a totally discretionary appointment for retired police officers to work details.
Okay. Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No comment.
Mr. Diggins.
Oh, I'm fine with that. Thanks.
All right, Attorney Heinz, too. Can we vote on action on the article with the amendment that was suggested by Mr. Carl, or do we have to push this for final votes and comments to the next meeting?
No, you traditionally, Mr. Chair, you vote on the final comments and about final votes and comments in one batch. So you vote to approve final votes and comments as amended by the board in a batch of votes.
Right, and so just to clarify the motion, so Ms. Caro, are you moving to vote on all final votes and comments with the modifications as noted?
Oh, this is the last one. I'm happy to do that.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, may I ask one question? I apologize. Um, Mr. Diggins, just to make it clear, you you have the option of basically having these things be, you know, your five oh vote, adding your vote to make it a five oh vote, or as we've also done sometimes in the past, making it, you know, that it's essentially a vote, and then you, you know, are we're newly a newly elected member of the board, however you want to handle that is is fine.
Yes, Mr. Diggins.
Well, well, let's say um, let's say I wanted to give um, Mr. Dunn credit for the votes and the work that he did on it. Would there be a way to do that, you know?
Absolutely. Yes, we reflect that there were the votes of the prior board. I believe that's what we did with Mr. DeCoursey when he was newly elected to the board. Is that correct, Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, that that's right. What what we did is the board's votes were listed, and then I I I think actually at the town meeting, Mr. Dunn at the time said had Mr. DeCoursey voted, he would have voted this way or the other, but I think you we could do that in the comments as well. I did. It's however, however, um, the chair would prefer, I guess.
That works for me if that works for Mr. Diggins.
Yes, yes. I mean, I very much like Mr. Dunn to get credit for the votes, me for for the work that he did in the votes that he participated in. And and I can say now that a we you can add that I am in agreement with them all or not, meaning that I am in agreement. You can add that or not, but please give Mr. Dunn credit for the votes that he for the hearings that he participated in. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just have a question.
Yep.
What I've written down is right now we have a motion by Mr. Caro, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey on Article Fifteen, and now we're also discussing.
All right, Mr. Caro had, correct me if I'm wrong, but had amended his motion, given that Article Fifteen is the last article that we have in final votes and comments to move favorable favorable action on all of the final votes and comments subject to the modifications that we discussed.
Okay, so his motion would be to move on Articles three, four, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in agreement with that. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Corsey, your second remains?
Yes.
All right, Attorney Heinz.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Diggins, I'm just going to take your vote for the purposes of uh just having the record reflect our discussion. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask you how should I vote? So I was, I was, was it was yes or abstain? So I think I say yes.
Okay, I think I understand what the board's, what the board's doing and and reflecting the votes of when Mr. Dunn was on the board, but your overall agreement with these articles. Thanks. Uh, Caro.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Thank you.
Yes, and that takes you, so as mentioned before, at the request of the proponents of two of the warrant articles, we're going to table those to the next meeting. So do I assume we need a motion to table those two items, Attorney Heinz? Sorry, you're on mute.
You don't, yeah, yes, I guess we should table the articles that aren't going to be discussed tonight until the next meeting.
All right, so do we have a motion to table Article Eight and Article Twenty Five until our next regularly scheduled meeting? So
Second.
I go with a motion by Mr. Caro, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Attorney Heinz.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Caro.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, so that brings us to our warrant article hearings that we'll have tonight. The first article up is Article Five Home Rule Rule Legislation Bylaw Amendment Fossil Fuel Interest Infrastructure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself from this warrant article. When we heard it back in the spring, I recused myself as well um for for work I do for National Grid, so I'm gonna um I'll shut off my video and mute myself.
Thank you. And the record will reflect that at this time, Mr. DeCoursey has muted himself and shut off his video as a recusal. All right, and Mr. Chaplain, do we have the proponent with us? Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Meeks. Welcome.
Hey, we have Mr. Chat. I wonder if we have one additional person who's on the steering committee and Wright, who is able to be with us because the meeting she had earlier is over.
Yep, Ms. Wright's with us as well.
We'll try to be if we will succeed in being brief here. It seems like a thousand years ago that we got together to have our first hearing on this, but it only March ninth. And at that time, we presented the detail of the policy that's involved here. And the board had a discussion, and we had a back and forth, and Mr. Dunn moved approval of of that the board support this warrant article, and that motion carried four to nothing. And really, what we're coming back here for today is accept in a few details exactly the same as the warrant article we had then. It involved, as as Mr. Heim's memo shows, it involves a prohibition of new fossil fuel piping or infrastructure in new construction and in what essentially got rehabilitations with a fairly large number of exemptions, all of which are designed to make this an entirely realistic policy. So for example, one exemption would be for lot for hot water in large in large buildings. We heard from Karen Kelleher, who's on the HPIC, and is a town meeting member for precinct five, that that it really basically addressed the concerns of the affordable housing community, and that actually affordable housing is leading the way in all electric construction. And there are several other exemptions which all in one way or another are designed to achieve the same common sense common sense limitations on what otherwise might be a unacceptably broad prohibition. So the board approved that. We were following the lead here of Brookline, which had adopted a very similar ordinance or bylaw earlier, and that was pending before the Attorney General. And we knew there was a, and the board knew that there was a risk that if we proceeded with the bylaw that we were proposing, that the Attorney General would find that it was not consistent with state law. There is a major issue in term because of the broad laws occupying the field involving the regulation of the sale of natural gas, involving the building code and involving the gas code, all of which are actually sort of different in their purposes from the environmental purpose that we have, but which nevertheless have been held in several cases over the course of time to essentially preempt local local regulation. So we waited a long time for the Attorney General. There was a very thorough consideration. And in July, she rendered an opinion, and the opinion had good news and bad news. The good news is she said that if she were, it was left up to her, she agreed with the policy that we had and was supportive and was reluctantly giving us the bad news, which was she also agreed with the industry that under the existing state law, this was preempted by all three of the statutes that I just mentioned to you. Well, the the nature of the finding is really that home rule or the regular home rule that we have doesn't extend far enough to justify this legislation. That's because the state legislature has essentially occupied the field, and what the state state legislature could do, the state legislature could undo. So after having long faces for much of an afternoon, we turned around and said, well, we don't have to stop here. We can just go to the source of state law, the state, the general court, and ask for authorization to do what we've proposed to do. Brookline went through the same thinking and is in the process in the town meeting, which is starting either this week or next, of asking for home rule petition as well. In the home rule petition that the language that that Attorney Heim has before you focuses primarily on the authorization for future action that we would like to see from the state legislature. Also, we would, we would like to be able to perfect the statute that you're the ordinance, the bylaw that you supported before. There are a few small changes that need to be made or that need to be at least considered, like it's been seven months later, and we still have the same effective date, so we may want to consider changing that. But in substance, that's really the same as the as what we had before. And so what you're looking, we're looking to have at the end of this is the same thing Brookline would have if the if they prevail as well, a ratification of the ordinance that they started with together with a fairly broad authorization for future action so that as as time goes on and we need to day and the town meeting needs to take further action, either to make this looser, to make it harder to change waiver criteria or whatever, that we can do that without also going through a special legislation process again. So that's pretty much where we are. As we mentioned last time, we had undertaken outreach. We took a long vacation for outreach for obvious reasons, but are beginning to do that again. We have on November twelfth, another forum established to update town meeting members and and others on what this legislation is all about, its purpose, the economics behind it, and all of the things that we generally addressed addressed to you last March. And we're hoping that to have a highly educated town meeting by the time it starts on November sixteenth. So I'm going to stop here. Amos and is our expert on everything that has to do with the environment and energy, and Anne is our expert on those things too, and is from others out front, and Amos is from is co-chair of Sustainable Arlington. And I'm just a town meeting member, but the three of us have been the steering committee from that. But in terms of the process that we've gone through, Anne is the particular expert for that. If anyone has any questions about the underlying policy or the underlying operation of the statute, the geeky things are for me, but the interesting science is all for Amos. And so with that, I'll stop now and invite any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. So I'll turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. Mr. Caro.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move favorable action. And to just say I appreciate the the work and the the nimbleness in in reacting to the the changing situation following the ruling in Brookline. I I think that, you know, we would all agree that an ideal outcome of this would be if we and some of the other communities submit home rule petitions along these these lines that the Commonwealth would see fit to you know, adopt legislation that that would that would give all communities disability or or would extend extend this uniformly throughout the Commonwealth. They're very similar to what we did last year with we did a home rule petition around extending voting rights to 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 non-citizens for local elections, realizing that many other municipalities are doing the same, and in hopes that there'll be a change at the state level. So thank you very much. And I'm I'm glad to see that we're able to still keep the ball moving forward and that your extraordinary outreach efforts are continuing. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan.
I'd like to second that.
All right, Mr. Diggins.
Uh, no comment. I'm fine with it. Thanks.
Yep, and you know, we heard this very similar, we had a very similar warrant article hearing last February, and we all voted in favor of this, and I mentioned then, I mentioned now. You know, I had talked, spoke with a HVAC contractor at that time who was in support of of this type of legislation because he said the the equipment that the new equipment that's more efficient that complies with the the what we're looking for here is what they're installing in a lot of the new construction anyways because of its usefulness to the homeowners. So I will support this. Without any additional comments or questions, Attorney Heim, we have a motion by Mr. Caro of favorable actions, seconded by Mrs. Mahan.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Caro.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Mr. DeCoursey recused himself, therefore it is a four zero one vote. Thank you.
Thank you all for sticking with us.
Thank you.
All right. Wait for Mr. DeCoursey to rejoin us, which he has. So as of right now, the record can reflect that Mr. DeCoursey is now a bit back with us. And that takes us to a warrant article for article of her hearing for Article Number Six, which is Vote Establishment of Police Civilian Advisory Board Study Committee. Do Mr. Weinstein with us? Mr. Weinstein. Name and address, and then tell us a little bit about your article.
Yeah, Jordan Weinstein, Lennon Road Precinct Twenty One in Arlington. Thanks for rehearing this. Thanks for rehearing this. This article was somewhat different when it was first proposed to you guys, you folks. Over time, I got a lot of feedback, not just from you folks on the select board, but also from other people, town meeting members and others that I met throughout my travels and talked about this. So when we were offered the chance to rewrite this somewhat, given the time delay and you know, the changes since it was originally submitted. I just wanted to point out a few of the changes that we made in response to some of the feedback that we got. The first thing was in the text, we clarified what the purpose of a police civilian review board was. What what was it that we were actually talking about? Because people were having questions about what can a civilian review board do? And we basically tried to clarify that the purpose was number one, that it would be independent from the police department, that it would have the authority to receive and investigate complaints. Something I know is done by the police department itself and other bodies within Arlington, but we felt that this would be a benefit to have this a safe place for people to file complaints that have to do with their interaction with the police. And also that this this study or the type of civilian review board that we're suggesting or would hope would come out of this would be able to review police services and make recommendations for improvement. The second thing we did was remove, we removed the requirement that the study committee actually submit a warrant article to create a civilian review board at the end of its work. Instead, the study committee in its in its current text would report its findings and recommendations to town meeting next year. So then it would be again up to town meeting. And finally, I might be missing something, but we moved the the phrase or take any action related there to to the very end so that the entire any part of the warrant can be amended by town meeting. That's about it. And I guess basically I hope that we can find some way to move forward on this in a a positive and in a way that seeks to simply improve on what we already have here in Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. Before I go to the board, I'll just note that I inadvertently forgot to reach out for public comment on the last article. I think we probably didn't have anything on that, but we will have that on this article if anyone's concerned about that. So first I'll go to Mr. Carol.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Weinstein, for bringing this forward. I'm glad that the that some of the technical issues with with the and substantive concerns, I think, with the with the original warrant article have been addressed. I I think in as we approach this discussion, I think anybody who's been hanging on to the meeting until now, I hope that they'll they'll look back to the the one and a half hour long kennel hearing that we just had. And and even more so, go into our go into our agenda and our packet and read the extensive report on that. Because it gives you a flavor of what a lot of the police work is actually within within Arlington. You know, I know the slogan is proactive and proud, but some of it's persistent and patient and trying to persuade folks to resolve, resolve disputes. But I think that that's instructive because as we know on the board, a lot of times folks don't can't resolve a dispute, whether it's two neighbors or whatnot, and they go to to an intermediary. And I think that that's why this is being brought forward in our in our final community conversation, I think it was even it was even raised. I mean, there are well established procedures for filing a complaint through the police department's mechanisms. I would expect that those would continue, but some people for one reason or another don't feel comfortable and would like to have an alternative mechanism. That that said, I did circle around him, Mr. Weinstein. I think I had some points that I had raised when we had our initial hearing in this. Some of them were addressed with the changes, some of them not 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 fully. So I want to just throw out on the table a few things that I think would make this an even a stronger proposal going into town meeting. I think that it is important that any study committee not only review police services, but but examine the experience of comparable communities, not just large city experience, but also comparable communities to Arlington. And how these types of complaint mechanisms work. Consider the potential impacts of pending legislation because that could be significant. We know that there's legislation in Beacon Hill that's that's in in conference. And as a practical matter, although the the warrant article envisions bringing recommendations forth to the 2021 annual town meeting. I mean, that seems to me to be a vestige of it being submitted for the annual last year under pre-COVID circumstances. As a practical matter, you're gonna be lucky to have the committee up and running and able to to meet. You know, very many times before our upcoming ATM. So so I would suggest that if a study committee is put together, that it develop its recommendations for consideration either by by the 2022 2022 annual town meeting or any earlier annual or special town meeting or other appropriate administrative management or elected or appointed officials. And and those special and annuals are opportunities for the committee to report out if they choose choose to do so. I just, I don't think as a practical matter. Setting in stone that the 2021. And like we would often do with town meeting committees. The study committee would dissolve with the dissolution of the 2022 ATM. Unless Tom meeting chose to extend or 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 shorten it prior. When we had our hearing, I also raised some questions about some of the membership. Although I think there was a pretty solid group of of members that are proposed in the article. I did have some questions about the equal opportunity advisory committee, which which deals with hiring matters and and I think in circling around. It was suggested that that the diversity task group might be a more appropriate body to fill that role on the on the committee. I think the other groups that are listed there are fine. However, I think that I had mentioned in our original hearing that I thought that it was important that we reach out for a designee of the council on aging. Because our seniors are particularly dependent upon the police. They're also particularly vulnerable to crime and fraud and 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 all else. And I think that's an important voice. I think I suggested a designee of the monotony manor tenants association, which has a substation with the police department also closely partners. Partners with depends on the police services. I'd suggested a student from Arlington High School that they they interact with our SRO on a on a daily basis. And I'm not sure if I suggested that time or not, but I think it's important that any study committee include a graduate of the citizens' police academy, which has gone through and has has had from a from a resident's point of view an inside look at how the police department operates. And then, you know, lastly, my recommendation, I I think the warrant article suggests one town meeting member, I I recommend that we put three town meeting members on on there. That makes a total of 13 voting members. Because I'll guarantee you, and we all know from our experience, you're gonna get to the floor of town meeting and and someone will move and say, we want more town meeting representation. We have a lot of experience within within the bodies. I also pointed out since then to the proponent that there are some kind of mechanical and process issues that 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 should be addressed. And, you know, we run into this all the time. There's something in there about the quorum, about the way that decisions are made, but you should specify the quorum and and such, and also specify how the committee is going to come together initially. So my recommendation is that the the non-voting members of of a committee include the three that are listed there, the chief police, so they designate the diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator, the designated town councilor designate, but also that one member of the select board be designated and that the it's on the member of the select board to convene the initial meeting of the study committee so that it can self-organize, elect a chair and such that be responsible for subsequent meetings and posting minutes and agendas and all of that. Those are my thoughts. Most of those I think I expressed during the initial hearing. I'm glad that that or take any other action related there too was was moved where it was that we can make some of these, which I would suggest are improvements to the to the the proposal to move it to town meeting for consideration. So I would like to move favorable action with with some of those parameters for discussion. I'm sure other board members will have thoughts on it. Mr. Diggins.
I'll second that motion. And Mr. Kuro covered a lot and 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 I really don't have anything to add to his suggestions. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll stop at this point. Maybe I'll come back later, but I think I'm good for now.
Mrs. Mahan.
I'm a little confused here because the initial board vote was to vote no action because our police chief indicated that she would be compiling stakeholders. Of this group of people. And it's my understanding she has done that. If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, ask Mr. Chaplin, and then if I could get, if I'm incorrect in any way, get the forum back so I can continue talking about this, but it's it's and if I'm wrong, I would ask the town manager to correct me on this, but my understanding is Chief Flaherty has contacted stakeholders from the original Warren article, which is why the board originally voted no action. To assemble that group together, and that's been happening. But if Mr. Chaplin could correct me either way from right or wrong.
Oh, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
So back in the spring, Mrs. Mahan is referring to Chief Flaherty's proposal to create a chief advisory committee. Given ongoing discussions in town, the chief had sort of held pat for a while in formally forming that committee. But she is now moving forward with putting it together. I gave her my approval on a letter she plans to send out to all the stakeholders that were outlined in her proposal for the chief's advisory committee back in the spring. I can't confirm that she has sent the letter out, but I know I know it was close to being finalized finalized and may have went out last week to begin to bring that committee together.
Okay, so I I get what I would say to my colleagues, and I'm trying to process this right now in my head, is that an issue when we heard this Warren article, the chief indicated she would be assembling the stakeholders together. It's my understanding that's pretty much in the end phase of doing that. And I know she was cognizant of the exception of what Mr. Kuro suggested in terms of representative from the council on aging. And someone from the high school in terms of a student, I don't know that that's necessarily one of the stakeholders that were identified in that. So my my inclination would be to allow the chief to continue on with that stakeholder committee that I believe has been set up, but I don't know 100%. But I would also ask that Chief Flaherty also make sure that there is someone from council on aging and from our student council. Or students as Mr. Kero has identified. So I would be voting no action on this. Just because I don't want to put this into a study committee with the chief has already moving forward, has identified stakeholders. They've been contacted, the committee's being constituted. But I do think perhaps there are two areas that Mr. Kuro identified in terms of the council on aging. And the student representative that needs to make sure has has a seat on the table. So I'll be voting no action because I want to support Chief Flaherty in the committee that she's, it sounds like from the town manager and from the chief from correspondence that were received. That has been identified and is beginning to meet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corsi, Mr. Weinstein, I will let you respond. I just want to go through the board first, if you don't mind. Mr. Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I have a few comments. And first of all, we'd like to thank Mr. Weinstein for the the changes that he submitted in the Warren article. And then just speaking for myself, some of the the language that that was used in the spring prevented me, among other reasons, from from supporting the Warren article. I appreciate the fact that you've moved, take any action related there to to the end. And a big issue I had earlier this year was that the committee had presupposed going back to town meeting with with the creation of the board. I wasn't comfortable with that because I thought the work should be done. And then when the work's done, the recommendation comes out of the work. So I'm glad that that came out. One comment on the additional language, I think that was your your point one on the clarified charge of what a review board would look like. I I'd almost like to see, you know, this be included among the alternatives that a that a committee, a study committee would look at. And, you know, whether it's a review board or an advisory board, what comes out of that study process is what should be brought to town meeting. So I'm a little concerned that that may be limiting in terms of the scope of what's going to be studied, but I I want to hear from maybe hear from my colleagues if they have any further thoughts on that. As to the voting members, I I think it makes good sense to add the the individuals that Mr. Kuro mentioned. By my count, we're getting to 14, Mr. Kuro. Wherever we end up, it should be an odd number of
Was 13.
Of of members. Okay. And and I will say, and this is an issue I've had with other committees with non-voting members. I I feel that particularly with the the police chief. If we're gonna be talking about changes, I think the police chief or a designee should be a voting member of any committee, any study committee. I don't think the town council should be a member. And and I think, you know, somewhat unfair to to require him to go to meetings. As a as a non-vote member, if there's work that needs to be, questions that come up and he needs to be consulted, that's fine, but I you know, we ask a lot of our town employees and and, you know, want to make them go to meetings and not even have a vote at the meetings. I I think is 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 problematic. And and I think, given his position, I don't think he should have a vote on this committee, but I also don't think he should be required to go to every to every meeting with Ms. Harvey, the diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator. I think if she's going to be on it, that 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 she should have a vote. So I think with those potential changes that maybe come out of a a draft vote, I could support Mr. Kuro's motion. One other point I want to make as far as the the chief's advisory committee, and again, back in the earlier this year. I over your objection, Mr. Weinstein, but I I said that I think the year is better served allowing the chief to go ahead with her advisory committee because at least that would get underway. And and it was almost like a two-pronged process. I'm now at a point where I I think these can be done in in parallel. The chief can have her advisory committee. And with the right makeup here and with the inappropriate charge. I I'd be comfortable with supporting a study committee. And and I do think the the end date should be extended because I don't think there's going to be a lot of work done between now and and the spring 2021 town meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Carl, so just to clarify and to follow up on what Mrs. De Corsi said in your motion. So, you know, I also got hung up on the limited charge of this committee and this Warren. So, you know, I also got hung up on the limited charge of this committee in this Warren article as far as, you know, I know it's we went back and forth last time about police civilian advisory board when it was really leaning towards a review committee that, you know, gets involved in disciplinary actions. So it could be that that's what the committee comes up with, but is the charge that you're in your amended motion giving to this committee just to review policing policies in general and come up with recommendations for town meeting rather than just specifically to a review board or advisory committee?
I mean, I think it's it's really it's an alternative complaint mechanism. So I mean, you could add that as a clause. Now, police civilian review board independent from police department with the authority, whatever, that the language that's in the the warrant article and say, or other alternative complaint or dispute resolution mechanism. In other words, because we want them to look at comparable communities, right? Comparable to Arlington, and it may it may well be that they find some communities that have an alternative mechanism that that is a little bit different from what's outlined here. So I think the point is well taken.
So it's not placing in general, it's just it's
No.
The committee's charge is to
No, my understanding
Way for citizens to lodge complaints.
Yeah. And honest, Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, I mean, my my understanding has been that the the chief's advisory council will be an ongoing committee that will be considering community policing in general on an ongoing basis. So that I think this a study committee should have a very defined charge. That's my feeling. And and I and I think that Mr. De Corsi's other points are well taken as well.
All right. And Mr. Weinstein, do you have any one or two minute?
Yeah. There's a lot of ground. Um, I want I I just wanted to emphasize that that there is a difference in what the the chief advisory committee would be doing, at least that's my understanding, and what a civilian review board would be doing. And I think Joe is right that the primary function, once it's up and running, I'm saying, you know, if if it if one is actually created in my mind, is to give citizens on us an alternative and a safe way to file a complaint about their interaction with the police if if they've had one a problem outside of the police department. And that's the main thing. I know that the police department has its own internal way of investigating complaints and receiving complaints, but I know from having been involved in this anti-racism thing for a couple of years now that there are people who have encounters with the police in Arlington, primarily who are people of color are not trusting, do not trust the process or that pathway to go to the police to complain about the police, feeling as if it just puts another target on their back. And we've heard plenty of, you know, anecdotal experiences relayed about this. So I think that it would be very helpful, and I think it would also be very valuable to in to build the trust in the Arlington Police Department to have some kind of alternative way, sort of a release valve, a place for people to go to a board that actually has the authority to investigate. And so I I think that that's number one. There is a difference, and I think that they can be they can operate simultaneously. But I don't think the chief's function is necessarily is going to be the same as as what I envision this board to do. The the other question I had is that I'm in listening to Joe's review of and and the others that Steve made and others have made. I'm not opposed to to most of it, and I I understand the need to change the reporting time and the timetable because the 2021 town meeting is too close. I was hoping that maybe if this study committee was created, that it might give some kind of an interim report to the 2021 town meeting. Because frankly, I mean, what's what's what everybody is waiting for, at least among my peers, is some kind of study or report out from this so that we can then use that data to actually craft a warrant article that would create some kind of civilian review board. So that's why it was, you know, there was a bit of pressure to try to get the study committee to report out sooner, but I get it. And everything everything is put on hold by the coronavirus.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Kuro.
I I think it's important to the Mr. Weinstein, understand that if this committee is study committee is created by town meeting, every every committee created by town meeting has the right to report at any annual or special town meeting. That that is that opportunity is always there and it's utilized. Some committees use it and some committees don't.
Okay. And the final thing I just want to say is I'm I'm poised and willing and able to make amendments to the language to try to satisfy most all of your concerns. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And Mr. Higgins?
So yeah, so what I'll say is that I'd support the notion of of real research being and looking into whether this is one a good idea. And and so if it passes that, you know, then how do we do it? Me, my impression was that it was more a review board as opposed to an alternative complaint board, which to me is a different mechanism because with review, I mean, you actually have an independent review of complaints that are brought before the police department. You actually have an independent review of of what the police department does. It's broader to a certain extent. And I think if we are aiming at like an alternative complaint in a mechanism, I think you might be just translocating the trans the trust issue to another body. And and I'll just suggest that you think about how you whatever body you would create as a result, let's say, Tom meeting does decide to create me an alternative complaint board that you somehow maintain the level of trust that you think isn't present in the current environment. So I just put that out there, but because this is purely research, it it I will support it. And and I'm interested in what comes out of it because I'm just always curious that way. And again, I will want to emphasize what Mr. Kuro said about the police advisory group because me, even when I campaigned, I said, me in favor of review, I mean, of a research group. But I also really supported me the notion of advisory group and that would have me large reach to be a committee as big as we wanted to be, but that would persist for a long time. So I'm very happy that the police chief is moving forward with that and that that will go on regardless of what happens with the results of this article. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the 11 o'clock rule to 11:45?
Yes.
A second, and if I could just definitely second Mr. Carroll's motion and as I've stated previously, the chief Flaherty has already established a committee. My colleagues want to vote to study forming a committee that the chief has already formed. That's fine. But I really want to be in terms of myself that we cannot have, as we have over the past year, that people come in and and speak for people of color that they say Diane M., Joe C., John K. has this thing. I don't think we should be going down that road. I think there's been some some damage to our community in terms of that we have white people are privileged that have been representing people of color, whether they're black or brown, which I have in my family myself. That they come and speak that way. I think we really need to find a balance here because I I'm I somewhat get frustrated that there's a need identified and there are people saying they're representing that need. But that need needs to be more identified. So my my only kind of frustrate frustration hesitation is Chief Flaherty already has formed the committee. If my colleagues want to form a study committee, to form a committee that the chief has already formed to see if there's any deficiencies in that, I'm I'm in total agreement with that, but I don't think if there are deficiencies that I I think certainly Mr. Kuro can bring forward in terms of, you know, seniors and our Black Student Union can bring forward in terms of high school students that that aren't representative. But I really want to make sure we draw a real fine line on that to make sure that that we're moving forward and not sort of sort of getting sidetracked on that. So
I'm just going to the board to see. So one thing, Let's vote on our motion to extend the meeting.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Shannon's vote?
We're extending to 11:45. So do you want to go to public comment? So at this time, if the public wishes to speak up to the article, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom app and we'll formulate a list.
There are five hands, six hands raised, Mr. Hurd.
Right. And we will close the list at those six hands. Can you just let me know all six names?
Yep. Elizabeth Dre. Judith Garber. Rajiv Sunaya. Rebecca Gruber. And Lynette Martin.
I must have missed one because I have five. Elizabeth Dre, Judith Garber, Rajiv, Rebecca Gruber.
I think I missed Anna Henkin, sorry. And an additional hand of Sandra Mustacho just went up. And Ed Tremblay just raised his hand as well.
All right, you can promote Mrs. Dre. We have a number of people, so we will set our three-minute time limit and just ask all speakers to hear it's a three-minute rule. I think you need to unmute, Mrs. Dre.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Elizabeth Dre, Jason Street, town meeting member for precinct eight. I'd like to thank you for this great discussion and stress how well how important it is that I think that we have representation of black and brown residents on this review board. So I would love to see the study committee include members of Envision, Arlington Diversity Task Group, the Black Student Union, maybe the Black alums as a substitution for representative of the Equal Opportunity Advisory Committee, as Mr. Kuro suggested. I also agree with Mr. De Corsi that this should be viewed as a parallel committee to the chief's advisory committee. The chief's committee is not a substitution for this Warren article. The chief's proposal is presented by her as a forum for discussion to present a diverse spectrum of viewpoints by community members. In contrast, the civilian review board is independent from the police department with the authority and resources to receive and investigate complaints, review police services and make recommendations for their improvements. These are two very different things, and there is room for both in Arlington. And supporting this should not be seen as not supporting the police chief's proposal because a civilian review board will actually help the police department by rebuilding trust within the community. This will be good for the community, and it will be good for the police department. And I would like to thank the town manager for his leadership last July when he signed the Massachusetts Municipal Leaders' Pledges, that leaders pledge principles and action on systematic racism in our communities and committed to declare that racism is a public health crisis and worthy of treatment, assessment and financial investment in order to eradicate negative impacts. And part of that pledge is to act locally and to make a change by implementing local principles of local police actions. And one of those promises is to discuss and explore the possibility of establishing a meaningful and effective civilian review board. The select board's approval, a vote of yes for the warrant six will help move the town of Arlington towards fulfilling the town manager's promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Garber?
Hi there.
Hi. Just say your name and address for the record.
Judith Garber, 130 Massachusetts Avenue. I'm speaking in support of Warren Article Six. I believe it's important that we have civilian oversight of the police department that is independent of the police department. I agree with what Jordan and others have said about there's room for both the police chief's discussion group as well as the civilian review board. I know from stories that I've heard from people in Arlington that there have been several instances of racial profiling and mistreatment of residents, but not all of them may have been recorded because, as Jordan was mentioning, lack of trust in the system when the only place to report it is the police department. So having a civilian review board, we give all residents or people traveling through Arlington a safer place to report such incidents. And it can go coexist with the chief's advisory committee. And I think having the study group to study this for a year would help ensure that any civilian review board that is recommended will have real teeth and lead to real change. So um, thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you. Here we have Rajiv. Hi, Mr. Sunaya. You just say your name and address for the record?
Sure thing. Hi, my name is Rajiv Sonija. I am I reside on 13 Mary Street. I'm here to voice my support for this civilian review board article. I also want to state I'm part of the Arlington Human Rights Commission, although I speak in a personal capacity today. I was involved in the deliberations with the Consensus Building Institute last year. The the report was commissioned by the CBI was in itself because of the mishandling of the town's response to the racist writings of the Arlington police officer. So one of the key recommendations to come out of that report was, and I quote, develop additional structures, policies and actions for the town of Arlington to ensure that Arlington and its employees live up to the values and aspirations of Arlington residents. So I mean, many other suggestions that were made by people who were involved in that report, one of the key recommendations was to create a review board or a community-based entity to advise on community police actions. So I believe the creation of the study group or the CRB is an essential step to bridge the gap that was created as a result of those writings. I would strongly encourage the select board to vote yes on this on this study group. I would also encourage that the select board somehow form a mechanism so that people from marginalized communities are part of the CRB. That includes people of color, people from suffering disabilities, people as recommended by Mr. Kuro, people from the Council of Aging. But it has to be a diverse panel to be able to oversee the police department. And I did, I finally just want to stay to Miss Mahon's comments. Speaking the truth does not harm the community. We harm the community when we do not speak the truth. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, Ms. Gruber. Hi, Mrs. Gruber. If you can just say your name and address for the record.
Rebecca Gruber, Pleasant Street. And I'll keep my remarks brief since the prior speakers have all been so eloquent. I just want to say that I am very excited about this article and I certainly hope it will be supported by this select board. Having such a study, I think, is a strong move forward in creating a healthy and responsive relationship between the police and our community. And I don't think this is an either-or situation with having such a study potentially leading to a board and the police department having its own committee of advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Henkin. Ms. Henkin, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Hi, Anna Henkin, Marion Road. I just wanted to speak in support of the warrant article to create a civilian review board study committee, potentially leading to a board, hopefully leading to a board. I think that having a really diverse study committee is very important to making sure that people feel heard, seen, and represented. And I feel like having a civilian review board gives people a sense that it's not just police who have an interest in protecting other police who are then policing police. It will go a long way to rebuilding the broken trust that the community currently has towards the police department. And it, I think, will give them a better sense of the problems in the community. When you can speak freely to a board, they can transfer those problems to someone else. When you have to, there's a reason that professors have you give anonymous feedback at the end of a semester, right? And that's a similar thing here. The chief's forum is useful, but it's not going to get all of the information they need. And this not only gives you an outside review board that allows you to have an outside review, it gives you a way to communicate that isn't monitored by police directly. So you feel like you can actually express your needs. And I think the town really needs that. And we need to respect those needs of our community. And I'm really in support of this warrant article. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having trouble reading my writing, but I think Mrs. Master.
I think Mustahoe, that's Sandra.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, hello. My name is Sandra Mustahoe. I'm at 191 Park Avenue. I will also be brief since most everybody that has spoken has commented in a similar manner. But I would just like to express my support of this article. I'd also like to clarify that this is just a study and it does not actually create anything. And it would be completely separate to the chief's parallel committee. Further, I feel like it is really an important step towards, you know, building a bridge to the community and building trust. Also, I feel that it is really just the beginning of trying to show our commitment to reform in Arlington. So again, I really just want to express my support and I really hope that we'll take it into consideration.
Yep. All right, we have Lynette Martin. Hi, Ms. Martin. If you can just say your name and address for the record. All right, can you hear us? Yep, there you go.
Sorry, can you hear and see me now?
We can hear you. We can't see you yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm on my phone today. So, oh, here we go. Got it. Hi. Thank you. I'd like to echo what Elizabeth Dre and Rajiv Sunaya and everyone else has said. I want, I would like to see select board members recognize that this is very different from an advisory board to the APD. It needs to be independent and separate. And I would agree with what select person Mahon said. It would be great to hear more from diverse residents, people of color. But we need to create a non-hostile place to do that, where people feel that they can come to these meetings, be heard. We need to continue to have cultural competency training. I was sort of taken aback by Ms. Mahon's citing that she has members of her family who are people of color. That's the kind of thing that just makes it seem like, you know, I can't be racist. I have a black friend type of stuff that just does not make these meetings feel welcoming to diverse members to participate. I feel like there have been lots of people of color who have come forward and spoken in support of the citizen review board and continue to address their concerns that they have in this community for some sort of oversight for our police department. And so I hope that we will see this at least go forward into a study committee. Thank you.
You muted, John. That's why I don't mute myself. Mr. Tremblay? Mr. Tremblay still with us?
No. I lost him. I clicked on him and he disappeared.
We have him now, I think.
No, he's there. Is he here now? Okay.
Mr. Tremblay, if you say name and address for the record.
Ed Tremblay, 76 Wright Street. It's been 30 years since I ran into an Arlington police officer that I didn't trust all that much.
Tremblay, I don't know if it's me, but can you go closer to your microphone? It might just be me.
So it's been 30 years since I ran into an Arlington police officer that I didn't trust very much. And I've never felt like there was, if there was a big problem, there wouldn't be people that you could talk to about it, like the selectmen, for instance. I think Julie Flaherty is a really good police chief. And I think she is fully capable of running a review board and selecting good people to be on it. I get a little concerned about there being competing review boards that have kind of different agendas than good, than just good community policing. And so I think, I think we ought to give Julie a chance to to put her board together, see what it looks like, see how it functions. And if it's not working, then we can revisit this again, idea again sometime in the future. But for right now, it's a let things, let Julie run things and the way she is a professional sees fit. Because I do get a little uncomfortable about people who have no experience and no clue what the police have to put up with reviewing what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. And the last speaker in our public section is Laura Kiesel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Laura Kiesel. I live in Capital Square. I just want to reiterate, I guess, what everyone else was saying. I think that it's really time that we try to rebuild trust in the community. I'm glad that that gentleman has had a nice trustworthy experiences with APD, but that has not been everyone's experiences. I live in affordable housing where we are more heavily policed. And even though I, who am white, have never experienced anything, I have witnessed things that make me question having trust in the APD. And there needs to be places that we can go to appeal if we have concerns about that. And it needs to not always be the people who obviously have a conflict of interest in finding potential misconduct in their own department. So, I mean, in fairness, I just looked and watched the select board vote on against a parking waiver that it looked like the Arlington Police Department denied a person with a disabled child, despite that I thought we voted on a waiver program for people with disabilities and low-income folks. And I read that letter while I was listening to you all. And the police said, you know, if he has a medical emergency, just call the ambulance. And besides the fact that that's expensive and that also calling 911 can bring police, which maybe a person doesn't want for a medical emergency, it shows again a lack of understanding and biases against marginalized people, such as disabled people and disabled children. So there needs to be more accountability for these kinds of judgments. And I hope that this is a very small step, this committee, in looking into whether this review board could maybe just begin to address that. And I like to say that I have shared this experience with the select board before. I actually experienced police brutality in my family. And my uncle, my family was poor and we did not feel empowered enough to file a complaint. We started the process. There was very little back then. And we were so intimidated that we dropped the complaint and we were white. And so, and that's still, I do a lot of studies and data research on this as a reporter, and that's still a problem. Most people do not feel empowered to file complaints against the police, especially with the police, because of concerns about backlash. And that's exacerbated if you're marginalized by race, by poverty, by health. Which also leads me to very quickly state that if you're going to also be recruiting retired police officers, just stating, well, they don't have a formal disciplinary record, doesn't address the concerns of people like me who know that that's not necessarily an ironclad way of making sure that police are not having more contact with marginalized people that they could harm. So again, I hope that you will consider this step. It seems like a very small step that may at least start to build trust in this community. Thank you.
Two minutes and 57 seconds. Good time. All right, so that ends the public comment portion. I'll just ask the board, do you have any more questions for the proponent? All right, Ms. Kuro, any additional comments?
No, no additional comments, other than I think I indicated that I accept Mr. De Corsi's suggestions.
Yeah, Mr. Diggins?
I was just hesitated. I was kind of trying to remember Mr. De Corsi's suggestions and I had them. And now, so yeah, I know, no additional comments except to say that we should just be cognizant of how we define community. And I think that's a big thing that we are going to need to explore when we take on this racial issues in a bigger sense in the future. As we've gotten, well, I'm starting, I'm starting to fade here, so let me just stop.
Mr. Kressi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I just want to clarify something I said earlier. When I talk about something running in parallel, I'm talking about the chief's advisory committee and the study group. And I think the chief should go forward with her advisory committee right now. And with the comments that Mr. Kuro made, I made as to having, you know, in my mind, as broad a scope as possible in terms of what's being reviewed and reported back to town meeting, you know, to the extent it includes other communities. You know, that's the type of study that I was looking at over the next year, year and a half. So I wanted to clarify the use of the term parallel. It was more in terms of time right now than in terms of what something might be in the future.
Mrs. Mahon?
Um, I'm certainly in favor of having a study committee that runs concurrent with what the chief wants to do. And I mean this with all due respect. I know it's been brought into question in terms of the statements I made previously. But I do not want white people of privilege speaking for supposedly people of color that need to get an issue before Arlington, Arlington Police, Arlington Select Board, Arlington School Committee, Arlington whatever. I want to find a way that through the chief's committee and the warrant article, that people of color, black, brown, or otherwise, find a way to do that. Just because I've been so entrenched in this, and I'll take the insults to me saying, you know, just because you say you know someone who's a person of color. No, I don't. I have grandchildren and daughter-in-law, et cetera, who are people of color, who my neighbor across the street, who's on the Human Rights Commission, can certainly attest to. And I don't want to bring them into this foray. But because previous speakers to this warrant article have cast dispersions on that, I just want to make sure, I want to have the real conversation with the real vested parties where they feel safe, because I understand not feeling safe having about a conversation. So I'm willing to also vote in support of this advisory committee. But I also have a lot of trust in Chief Flaherty in terms of the committee that she's already constituted. But I always think we, in Arlington, we should look at things and we can do it better. So I'm in favor of that. But I just want to make sure we're cognizant of that it seems like it's the same six or seven white people of privilege that talk about people who feel that they haven't been treated fairly. So I'd like to find a way that those actual people who do exist find a safe way to communicate that, so we actually can get that to some resolution. So it's a little sensitive for me because, you know, me and my family, not so much me, but my family's been attacked. But we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I can support the motion. I do want to just say, from my own personal opinion, that I don't, you know, I think this came out of one individualized event and we know that another residents were happy with the result. I don't think, you know, we've said before that we think that the vast majority of the APD is comprised of excellent officers who do amazing jobs for the community. And under Chief Flaherty's guidance and the community policing model, you know, we really do have the model policing department. But, you know, any department, any board, any part of town government can always, you can find ways to improve. I don't think that it's a civilian review board that steps into disciplinary decisions on behalf of the town manager or the police chief is a good idea. There's a lot of considerations such as labor law and how any decisions that they make are going to affect. There's a lot of considerations such as labor law and how any decisions that they make are going to affect the town as a whole. But I do think that this committee can, the charge that we've, we've given them and the expanded members that Mr. Currow has spoken of can come up with what a solution could look like. And just, you know, again, this is a committee to determine what, if any, recommendation would go to town meeting. Proponents that want, if someone wants a civilian review board, they always have the opportunity at any town meeting to profit that Warren article on their own outside of this committee. So I think this committee with its current makeup, as recommended by Mr. Caro, can come to a reasonable solution to address the concerns that we've heard from the community in the past few years. So with that, I will go to Mr. Attorney Heim, which looks like he has a comment anyways. But so we have what I would guess are two votes, correct? A vote on Mr. Caro's motion and then a vote on the article as suggested by Mr. Weinstein? Or you can correct if I'm wrong?
No, Mr. Chair. Usually the board takes one vote.
Yep.
And says that it recommends, if you're recommending positive action on this article, you basically take a vote to say, we're recommending positive action, and this is the motion that we recommend to the town meeting. Now, the board can instruct me to work with, you know, in the parameters of your comments, and I can certainly confer with Mr. Weinstein and try to basically create something that's sort of mutually reflective of all the discourse here tonight. Or the board can just direct me to draft, you know, a motion, and if there's disagreement, the, you know, substitute motions can always be submitted. It seems like from, it's a large dialogue here that there's at least a pretty good chance that what the board has sort of asked for from a motion from this will be amenable to Mr. Weinstein, and there will be one motion before town meeting. I just have two very quick substantive things to raise. One is the diversity task group doesn't have a membership per se. It's a more fluid entity than that. So if one of the entities is going to try to appoint somebody who's a diversity task group, we call them members, but sort of more participant, maybe that vote should come from envision Arlington Standing Committee out of, you know, people who come from diversity task group. Secondly, there's been some discussion about wanting to make sure that there's a diverse group of folks on this committee, whether they're doesn't need a one body or another, and how we've handled that in the past, because it can be difficult from a legal perspective to reserve a certain amount of spots for a person of, of this sort of ethnicity or sexual orientation or whatever, is we've put in language that basically says that the committee shall reflect the, you know, diverse, you know, demographics of the town of Arlington. As sort of more like, hey, appointing authorities, you need to make sure that you're putting somebody on that, that helps to represent, you know, a myriad of experiences, viewpoints, and things of that nature. Does that make sense to you folks?
Yep, Mr. Curran?
Yeah, that makes sense. And Mr. Heim, if it helps at all, I mean, a lot of what I was talking, talking, I have a lot of written notes that I can give you that I think capture the points that I raised, that if that would help in putting together a, a recommended vote and comment for our next meeting.
I know it's late, so I'm happy to take all of, watch this dialogue again. I'm happy to take all the board members' sort of feedback on this, talk to Mr. Weinstein, try to put together one motion. Obviously, the comments here might represent a diversity of viewpoints. Maybe not everybody's thinking the exact same reason for saying this is the recommended vote. And that's okay. We have plenty of comments that reflect, you know, this is what some board members thought, this is what other board members thought. You know, so I'll draft a vote that builds on what you've commented here. I'll try to work with Mr. Weinstein and hopefully we'll have something that everybody supports when it comes back for final votes and comments in terms of its form. Thank you.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, in terms of the diverse representation, I will say there's probably no harm, I mean, if there is an over-representation of, um, let's just say if it over, over represents minorities. I mean, I think maybe for the study group purposes, that might be a good thing in this situation. And so I hate for it to be such that it's limited by that statement, so that over-representation isn't a problem, but under-representation is.
Okay.
I think I hear you loud and clear, Mr. Diggins. I, I, I hope that what I put together for everybody will reflect the nuances of all our discussions.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Caro, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Turn it on.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Chero?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. Yeah, right. And that brings us on to what will hopefully be the quickest Warren article hearing in history.
Again, that having been said, Mr. Chair, I move the 11 o'clock rule to 12.
Yes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Turn it on.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Let's break the last meeting's record, yes.
Mr. Chero?
Regrettably, yes.
No one can say you're not earning that stipend, right? Mr. Hurd?
Yes. We have a hearing on warrant article 10, acceptance of legislation, Gold Star family tax exemption. We have Mr. Town Manager or Mr. Attorney Heim?
I'm sorry, if the manager would prefer to speak about it, that's fine, that's fine, me, of course.
I will simply say this is filed at the request of Director of Veteran Services, Jeff Chunglo. It provides pre-planning a tax exemption for Gold Star families, of which we have a small number in Arlington. I certainly supported the request as, as I think what could be a modest benefit given to people who have experienced the ultimate sacrifice in their family and would be, I'd be asking for favorable action on behalf of the board.
Thank you. This is a question.
Yeah, move favorable action.
Mrs. Mahan?
Second.
Mr. Diggins, any comments?
No comments.
And Mr. Currow?
No, let's vote it.
All right, and I will as well. I will open it up for a public comment with a raised hands motion. Seeing none? Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
I want to say yes, thank you, and thank you to Jeff Chunglo and the Gold Star families that have given a great sacrifice to this. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Chero?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. We'll have to find one. All right, so that brings us to correspondence received, item number 12 on our agenda. Lower Washington Street Safety Concerns, Regina Tavani and Lower Washington Street Butters. Do we have?
Move receipt, Mr. Chair.
Move receipt. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Attorney, Mr. Currow? No further comments. Mrs. DeCoursey?
I have no further comment.
Attorney Heim?
Well, I'll say one thing, I think we're going to boot that one over to Tac, or what does the, I think, town manager just has something to say.
I mean, reading through it, it's not immediately clear to me because it's a private way that it's a transportation issue so much as a problem-solving issue. So I was going to ask if I could have Assistant Town Manager Ray Santilli, see if he can pull together a few departments and see what type of problem solving we can do. You know, we're, we're not going to pave the road. That's, if it's a private way, but there might be some creative things we can do. Working, working with the Butters as we've done in past circumstances. And I, I think we can start, if we, we can start like that if the board supports that.
Wonderful. Nice.
Turn it on.
Okay.
Yep. Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Chero?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
You do have new business at this meeting. New business, Attorney Heim?
No, sir.
Mr. Chaplin?
I'll pass tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
It's a big, on to the next person. Thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very, very briefly, and I'm glad it's before midnight. I just want to wish happy birthday to Mark DeCoursey, my youngest. And he's got 13, 11 more minutes left on his birthday. 20 years old today, so happy birthday, Mark.
God bless him.
Well, we'll look forward to next year's birthday. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a couple, but I'm going to save it for another meeting.
Mr. Cur?
It's really one sentence, basically. I, I had never notified the board that I had applied for and been appointed as the municipal representative to the Superintendent Search Screeding Committee. There was an excellent field, field of candidates that, that has come in. It's a really great committee. We'll be conducting interviews. We expect to be, over the next two weeks, we expect to do deliberations on November 2nd to report out finalists to the school committee for the next superintendent.
Thank you. No new business. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Mahan?
Second.
By Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Chero?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. 10 minutes to speak. If anyone has more new business.
Cheers. Good night, everyone.